Good evening, welcome to the June 13th, 2016 Regular Meeting of the Marquette City Commission. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, if we could have a roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Baldini?
Here.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Plord?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Here.
And Mayor Campana?
Here.
Do we have any agenda changes tonight? See none? Do we have approval of the agenda? Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Next, we come to announcements. Oh, we have to vote, I'm sorry. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. Now we come to announcements. First, you know, we had this tragedy in Orlando this past weekend. Very big tragedy, loss of life. Could we have 10 minutes of silence and reflect upon this, please?
10 seconds.
Is that what I say? 10 seconds. I'd go for minutes. 10 seconds. Okay, thank you. I have some other announcements here. First being, next week, the Arts and Culture Committee is sponsoring a week-long art celebration. They have programs, demonstrations, exhibitions by local artists throughout the city. It's a big deal, there's a lot going on. I think you'd find it very interesting if you look into this and attended. They'll be featured at various businesses throughout the city. I picked up this pamphlet, and it really is, there's a lot going on. If you need to get information on it, you can check at the Peter White Public Library, or on the city website, or just call the Arts and Culture Center. Be something very, another interesting and exciting thing to do in Marquette. My last announcement is, you know, we're always looking for people to volunteer to work on, to be on city commission, or city committees and boards. Basically, there's probably openings in every board that we have. I will mention two of them tonight. Maybe this will spark some interest. We have the Board of Zoning Appeals, which meets on the first Thursday of each month at 7:00 PM. Their function is to hear and decide appeals on zoning, fences, signs, and property maintenance code ordinances. That can be something that might be of interest to you. If you have an interest, please think about signing up to join this committee. The second, we have an authority, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, meets on the fourth Thursday of each month at 8:00 AM in the morning. Their duty is to facilitate the implementation of brownfield plans, where they take contaminated, blighted, or obsolete property and help develop it, such property into productive, tax-paying businesses. Our brownfield authority here in town is doing a lot right now. They have a lot going on, it's an exciting board to be on. You won't be bored being on it. I would consider thinking about joining this one. Next, we move to boards and committees. Tonight, we welcome two new members. And if I could meet them at the podium on my right. The first new member would be Robert Lambert. Robert, if I could see you at the podium?
Got to get on TV.
Do I have to?
You've got to. Robert has agreed to join the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We're very happy to have him do this.
Thank you, sir.
We're going to give you this pin. It's the official Marquette pin. It signifies you as a volunteer, and one who's going to help out the city.
Thank you.
So again, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Glad you're doing this, we appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.
Would you like to, you're going to swarm it, would you like to say a few words?
Not really.
Okay. Perfectly fine.
I'm just glad to be here, that's all.
We're not going to make you take it off, though.
Do you want to do them all at the same time, or do you want?
We can do one off, if you want.
How do you want to do it?
Let's just do it one at a time.
One at a time.
We'll make it quick, I promise.
Will it hurt?
It will not hurt. Just raise your right hand, and actually just read the content of that sheet to me.
I, Robert Lambert, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Marquette, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board of the City of Marquette according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Claire Moore. There you are. Claire, Claire has offered to serve on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. We're going to give Claire the official Marquette pin. Hope you wear it proudly. Again, signifies you as a volunteer. We thank you again for doing this. You are a graphic designer, so you'll fit in well with this committee. So, we thank you. Care to say a few words?
Thank you for having me.
Come here, just so they can see you on TV. Okay, good, thank you.
Good, Mom.
Yeah, good. Now you're going to take your.
I, yeah, I've got mine, yep.
Oh, you've taken?
I've taken mine, yep.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have one appointment. We have Wayne Primo to the Planning Commission for a term ending 2/15/19. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
Make a motion to appoint Wayne Primo to the Planning Commission.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plord?
A second.
Comments, any? See none? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Next, we have a reappointment. We have Dottie LaJoy to the Marquette Housing Commission for a term ending 6/14/21. Do you have a motion? Pro Tem Reynolds?
I move we reappoint Dottie LaJoy to the Marquette Housing Commission for a term ending June 14th, 2021.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Comments?
None.
See none? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? That carries 7-0. Tonight, we have three public hearings. Our first public hearing is to consider a zoning ordinance text amendments requested by the Marquette Downtown Development Authority. City Clerk, if you could give us some background, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Background. The Marquette Downtown Development Authority submitted an application for an ordinance text amendment on March 14th, 2016. The request was to remove outdoor food and beverage service as a conditional use in both the Community Business (BC) zoning district and the Central Business District zoning district. The purpose listed for the request was, quote, "There are no conditions in the zoning ordinance for this conditional use, and the downtown waterfront form-based code district allows outdoor food and beverage as a principal use. The modification will consistently provide the same standards throughout the Downtown Development Authority district. It also corrects a discrepancy in the current ordinance that contains no conditions for a conditional use," end quote. Applicable zoning ordinance standards, 80.24 (BC) Community Business District. Intent: The Community Business District is intended to encompass businesses which cater to the retail and service needs of the community, but which do not require large areas of land. These districts are encouraged to develop in clusters with common parking areas. Limited residential uses are allowed when they accompany non-business uses for the purpose of increasing the viability of small businesses and offices. Two principal uses, see Section 80.40.2. A, all principal and conditional uses permitted in the OS Office District. B, retail business and service establishments catering primarily to the local market. C, residential units. D, daycare centers. Five conditional uses, see Section 80.65. Establishments selling alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises. B, motels. C, group residential facilities. D, bed and breakfasts. E, bed and breakfast inns. F, outdoor food and beverage service. G, light manufacturing. H, homeless shelters. 80.25 (CBD) Central Business District. One, intent to provide suitable regulations for the business-oriented core area of the city which serves both local and regional markets, such as offices, retail, or wholesale sales or service, light manufacturing, and mixed uses that include residential. Two principal uses, see Section 80.40.2. Retail, office, and service functions which are conducted within completely enclosed buildings and residential units. A, farmers and other outdoor markets in accordance with Chapter 6 of the Marquette City Code. B, temporary outdoor sales and display of merchandise in conjunction with Marquette Downtown Development Authority and Downtown Marquette Association sanctioned events. C, outdoor entertainment and community events. D, mobile food, mobile outdoor food and beverage vending in accordance with Chapter 6 of the Marquette City Code. Five conditional uses, see Section 80.65. A, motel and hotels. B, churches. C, bed and breakfasts. D, bed and breakfast inns. E, outdoor food and beverage service. F, light manufacturing. G, homeless shelters. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on the request on April 5th, 2016, and after conducting the hearing, made the following motion. It was moved by Jay Carlson, seconded by S. Lowry, and carried 8 to 0 that after review of the staff file and analysis for 03-ZOA-04-16, and after conducting a public hearing, the Planning Commission finds that the requested text amendment is not in the best interest of the community, and that the conditional use permit process is appropriate in the CBD and BC zoning districts, and therefore recommends to the city commission that the requested amendments to the zoning ordinance be denied. Per the zoning ordinance, the city commission may deny the petition. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendments requested by the Marquette Downtown Development Authority, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're going to open this public comment, public hearing. If you wish to address the commission, please come up to the podium on my right. You have three minutes. We would need your name, address, city, or township. Does anybody wish to address the commission?
Go for it, Mom.
Okay.
I'll go first. Good evening. Taylor Clip, Chair of the Planning Commission. I just wanted to give you guys a quick summary on why we felt a conditional use is a good move in this case. Probably the best way to summarize this is, from our last meeting, we actually authorized the Mark Restaurant to have outdoor seating and beverage service. In, if this sort of thing, if outdoor food and beverage service was just allowed without any sort of permitting or conditional use process, there wouldn't be a public hearing. And we think that that's important. In the case of the Mark, we actually passed this, but we had to think about, okay, how is this going to affect the children's museum, that sort of thing. We don't want to rush in. We do think that allowing food and beverage is a good idea, and we're probably going to allow it in most of the cases, but we really do think a public hearing's important because while we do want to make this a vibrant city, we want to have more and more people outside in private spaces, public spaces, parklets, and we're all for outdoor food and beverage service in all those places. We think there should be some sort of public hearing. That being said, right now, the conditional use process for something, for most of these cases, is probably a little overwrought and definitely too expensive. So, we've asked staff to redraft rules and come up with rules for, say, you know, a place that's just putting in some fencing, and maybe some bushes and some tables. Well, you know, there's no construction. We don't need to have a large amount of cost, or time, or effort going into that. But we're going to try and step these, so that there is going to be some sort of public process involved. We will be able to get the public's input for all of these cases. And that's why we think it should actually, any of these cases, when we're talking about outdoor beverage and food service, we think it should come through us, and there should be a, at least a minimal, public hearing. That's it? You guys have any questions for me?
Not yet, maybe later.
Thank you.
Lana Lang, I'm the Executive Director for the Marquette Downtown Development Authority.
Address?
175 Pine View Drive, office address 203 South Front Street in Marquette.
Thank you.
And I do appreciate the Planning Commission's concerns, and our intent from the DDA was actually to move this process forward in a permit process, the same way that it's done on public property. To get a permit, a sidewalk permit for public property, it's a simple permit process, you go through the city clerk. However, it does go through every department, there are regulations. They look at residential, they look at other uses. It's an annual permit, so there's an annual review of that permit. And it's $165 with liquor, $100 without liquor, and it's, it's much easier for our businesses. I believe that the process right now is burdensome. Businesses are going through site plan review, then they're coming back again, they're going through conditional use. In the case of the Mark, and I appreciate the, that they've come through the process, I know they were very frustrated. It cost them $1,881 for this permit. It also cost them to go through, back through their architect, to get sealed plans for a patio that was already approved through site plan review. And in addition, in addition to that, they've probably lost eight weeks of expanded business that they could have had from additional seating from the outdoor, from outdoor seating. And I just want to read just real quickly. "Our community master plan embraces the importance of placemaking and capitalizing on the economic value of placemaking. In the plan, it states that outdoor seating in cafes help bring economic and physical activity to the city streets and local restaurants. The Third Street Corridor Sustainability Plan, which was endorsed and included as part of the community master plan, encourages the expansion of outdoor seating and dining decks. Section C83 of our community master plan states, businesses should be encouraged to provide outdoor seating." In addition, from the DDA's perspective, we have three different processes for basically the same service. And that is, the waterfront district does not, it's a, it is a principal use. The CDBG in the Community Business District, it's a conditional use. And then, if it's a sidewalk cafe, it's a completely different process. So, we are respectfully requesting that the city commission relook at this process. I think that as we move forward as a community, a lot of, obviously, it was discussion in our work session, that a lot of our codes, a lot of our ordinances, and policies, and procedures need to be relooked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening, Commission members. Jim Clark, Managing Partner, Clark Properties, 102 West Washington, Downtown Marquette. I'm in favor of this ordinance change primarily because of what Lana says, and I'll echo her statements. It is, it is the basis and the foundation of one of our plans that's been going on in the DDA since the early 80s. Much of the funding that we've got for the connectors to the, from the public parking to the private buildings, through the walkways and the corridors, we have attached on those economic development grants our, our plan to the Michigan Department of Management and Budget, so when they award these funds. Our plan that you have adopted and endorsed basically says, we, we want these outdoor seating areas to help renovate these downtown facilities. Over 85% of the downtown buildings do not have any parking at all. So, in the early 80s, when statutes were adopted by our legislature, we, we found a conduit that found, created a public-private partnership between downtown private buildings and the City of Marquette. In order to create this need for downtown use in buildings, many of these buildings were great buildings, but they didn't have parking. And it was very difficult to renovate or access those properties in order for, for new commercial uses without that parking facility, which the DDA is the backbone of our economic success in the downtown development area. The way I see that, I guess, coordinating with this ordinance change is, we have seven walkway corridors that have all received EDC grants, and every one of these grants did encourage outdoor dining and seating. This is something we have filed with the state, saying, this is what we plan on doing. There were, there were recreational grants in that area. The primary recreational grant through MDNR was for the acquisition of the Railroad Wideaway, and what I would call the trestle spur. That application was actually done with the city, and joint, and directly with the city for the acquisition of the property, but the recreational grant money was primarily just for the connecting of the bike path system. The spur that goes to the trestle was not identified as any kind of outdoor park or recreational area at all, they were actually causeways and abutments. So, this is just continuity for what Elwood Matson set up as our system to make downtown what it is today. Elwood created this structure, and created this partnership between the city and the DDA, and all the landowners, which is a very difficult task, and this framework has done very well. We are rated 3 in Downtown Development Authorities in the state right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Oriana Drive, Marquette, Michigan. I was not intending to talk to this at all tonight, but I think that it does bear a comment. Certainly, Ms. Lang and Mr. Jim, rather, laid it out very, very well. The facts and the reasons and the procedures. I'm just a consumer, I have no oar in this fight beyond being a taxpayer in Marquette, and somebody who enjoys dining out and enjoys being part of the Marquette community. And I think it's very important that you accept, that you take the recommendation as presented to you tonight by the DDA, because I think it's very well thought out. I think it removes a lot of the very significant encumbrance that is presently placed on trying to establish such restaurants. If all you do is send it back to the Planning Commission, you're dropping it down a black hole. And that's a terrible thing to do with a good idea. You've got procedures in place that overlook this, that allow for changes and modification over time, as explained by Ms. Lang, and I would encourage you to look for ways to support small business in this community, and to support it in a timely fashion, in an economic fashion, rather than allowing it to be something that's drawn out again, and again, and again, and continues to have a high cost associated with it. I would submit to you that the Mark is not a success story, it is a failure story, because of the amount of money it cost them, the amount of effort it took to get it done, and here we are, trying to, again, lost in this quagmire of self-imposed regulation. So again, I would encourage you to cut through that, do the best you can to support small business in Marquette, and to take the recommendation as offered by the DDA. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wish to address the commission? See none? We're going to close this public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Make a motion that we suspend the rules for discussion.
Is there a second? Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes 7-0. We shall discuss this. Commissioner Cam Benzi, would you like to lead off?
Well, I'd just like to start off by saying that because it is a conditional use, if the owner meets all of the requirements in the zoning ordinance, we have to by law grant that conditional use. So, unless they don't meet the requirements, they will get a outdoor permit. What I don't agree with is the hoops, particularly the cost, but I think by not approving this tonight, which would be my recommendation is to concur with the Planning Commission, we are looking at redoing our zoning ordinance within the next four to six months. And I think that is the time to let the Planning Commission actually look at this, to see if there's an administrative way to deal with this, or if this is the best way. But I don't think we should play Planning Commissioners up here, because I think the stuff that comes to them, comes to them for approval in a very technical way. And so, again, anyone that applies for this permit right now will be granted one, if they meet the conditions. I don't think we've turned one down. I was against the cost, raising all the costs for the planning department during last budget season, this is one of them. I mean, $1,800 is too much. But tonight, I, I feel like right now is not the time to do it. I think this needs careful consideration because of adjoining districts, zoning districts. Downtown, not worried about it so much. Third Street, definitely worried about it. So, I think, I think we will get to this. I think there might be a better way to do it, but I would trust staff and the Planning Commission to make that recommendation.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I am very concerned about the cost also, and, and I'm reluctant to change this process right now, because at our earlier meeting this evening, and last week, on the strategic plan, the thing tonight that a number of us emphasized is the need to redo the zoning for the city, and also look at what the Planning Commission's doing. The Chair of the Planning Commission tonight acknowledged the fact that the fees are sort of inconsistent, or need some review. And, and I think we as a commission, at least I as a commission, I can't speak for the commission on this, I do think our, our fees are too high. I do think the, the case in point from the specific one, $1,800 is rather significant. It's not as if we're dealing with a 10-month summer season. And, so I, I do think it, it needs an evaluation, a reevaluation. But we did have a rather lengthy discussion at our earlier work session, specifically on redoing the zoning, and also working with the Planning Commission to give them the tools to, to work at this. Also, there was some discussion about the different parts of the town. We do have Third Street, we have Berga, we have downtown, and, and does this one model fit everything? And, and that's a legitimate question also, which we would turn to the Planning Commission to seek some guidance on that. So, as, as much as I would like to see these fees reduced, we're not going to do that tonight, if we accept or reject this, but I, I do want people to know, and I'm, right now, I'm prone to vote for this motion, at this time, only because we are going to, in the strategic plan, put money in there to really seriously evaluate the entire thing. So, thank you, Your Honor.
Commissioner Frazier?
I'm all for businesses trying to make their business better by having outdoor seating. We all know that businesses around town that have outdoor seating are maybe more popular than other businesses, but I do think we need to have somebody looking over it, just to make sure it's designed right, and that's, and that's just a, it's not just a free-for-all, where they just design it however they want. I think it's good to have somebody looking over it, just to make sure it's done right. I agree with the other commissioners that we should try and find a way to lower the fees, so businesses that have an idea, maybe wanting to do it, can do it and increase their businesses.
Pro Tem Reynolds?
I have two questions, and they're probably for you, Dennis, I would imagine, or Carl.
I have two questions, and they're probably for you, Dennis, I would imagine, or Carl. As far as conditional use permits, um, as Sarah alluded to, that they're not really denied, but somebody applies for ones, when is, how long does that take, the process? And the second question is, as to Mr. Clip alluded to, um, that you got, you would be looking at some kind of other structure or fee type of thing, what kind, what, could you give me more details on that?
Um, first question is, uh, the twenty business days before the meeting is the cutoff for, uh, for a conditional use permit, um, due to the state zoning act requirement of fifteen days' notice, so we need some time to process and coordinate with the mining journal. Um, as far as the second question, the, um, there are a number of possible solutions to this that could be looked at in the, in the update of the zoning ordinance, um. We have, things that we have procedures in our zoning ordinance that are called uses subject to appeal, where the staff official makes sure that a certain number of standards are met, quite similar to like the license for a sidewalk cafe, although that's a different part of the code. So there's, there are things that could be looked at to, to, uh, lessen the regulatory burden on the property owners. I mean, unfortunately, I don't have a solution tonight, I mean, that's something that does take a little bit of time, but we definitely think there are some solutions.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Plord.
This subject came up in a, a recent meeting, and I thought at the time that, uh, I had all my ducks in a row and I didn't, um, and I apologize for that. Uh, this is actually a, a more complicated subject than I think most people realize, and I've learned a lot more about the situation, and I wanna learn more besides. I'm inclined personally to allow the planning commission to do their job. I think the planning commission does a great job, and I agree with, uh, Commissioner Cam Benzi, I don't think it's the, the, the job of the commission to do the planning commission's job. Uh, I would like personally to hear what the planning commission, um, has planned on this and has to say about this, and I'm willing to take the time, and I know the time is of the essence and I understand that, uh, but I'm willing to let the planning commission do their work and, and find out what the results of that work are, is. Uh, and, uh, I've also learned that there's a reason for some of the fees, I agree that the fees may be a little steep. I do wanna say this, though, um, it's, it's not the city's fault, nor the commission, nor the planning commission's fault, if a business finds out that they need to go through the process after the fact. When they're planning a business and they're run, starting, getting a business started, this needs to be one of the ducks that they get into a, in a row. Uh, and so I'm not inclined to vote, uh, for the, the downtown development authority just because somebody found out, wow, we need to do this, and now we can't get into business right away because we didn't do this. It's okay, and, I also, though, believe, and I feel that, uh, for my own self personally, I like the outdoor seating, I li, absolutely in, uh, behind and encourage small business, and I think we can do, or we should do what, whatever we can to help small business, but I think the planning commission is doing that. And I also agree with the planning commission in the sense that, uh, there should be a public review and a public hearing and a public oversight as well, so, uh, that's, that's my position on the subject as it stands right now.
Commissioner Conley.
Well, I wanna thank the planning commission for taking this up, and I, I agree with the planning commission when they ask for public hearings for this kind of thing, and, uh, 'cause I think public hearings are, are a good thing. I think, yes, we want business, but we want good neighborhoods too, because these places border oftentimes on neighborhoods, uh, we need to look at the impact. Um, and is, is the fee too much? For something simple like this, probably is. Uh, I know why fees are high for, uh, uh, conditional use permits, uh, oftentimes they're more complex, they take a lot of staff time, and, uh, that should be reimbursed by those that, uh, asked for the, the CUP. Uh, for something simple, uh, maybe there should be a smaller and simpler fee. Uh, but I think the, so I, I don't think we should allow the cost, the current cost, to, uh, take over and overshadow the need for, uh, public input. So I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna side with the planning commission and concur in their, uh, in their denial of this request.
My feeling is, uh, the planning commission has looked at this, they looked at it hard and they've done a lot of hard work on it. They have a reason for their suggestion, recommendation. Marquette is, if we have outdoor dining, it adds to the vibrancy of the city, I think it's, uh, what we want, it, it's what helps, what makes us special, so we need to have it, we can't, we should not be discouraging it. It's my belief that a, um, conditional use permit incurs more cost, the eighteen hundred. I think what we're hearing tonight is that we would like to see the planning commission update their zoning so that we can perhaps license these, uh, these restaurants and bars and not, um, not have them have to go through a conditional use permit. If they just get a license, it'll be faster, quicker, easier, and cost less. Could I ask either Taylor or Paul of the planning commission if this is true? Do you guys have plans to do, to do something on this? Second question is, how long would it take you to do this? Is that a legitimate question? Could you take the podium? Were you planning to change, to do some upgrading of the zoning?
Yes, um, uh, we are. I think the black hole that, uh, Mr. Stonehouse talked about was us doing the, redoing the entire zoning ordinance, um, that's definitely gonna be a black hole for all of us. I, for this in particular, we have directed staff, um, quickly to put together something that, it, you have to figure here, it's not just the fees on these conditional uses, um, you have to bring in, uh, again, we go to the mark, they wanted to put in tables, they had to get an architectural drawing. So there's a direct fee, the conditional use, that takes time, that takes a lot more money than it should. There's also the indirect fees, we're gonna make you, you know, have a, ha, have a professional just put tables into a site plan, that's, that's pretty ridiculous, and that's probably another thousand bucks. So, we've, you know, added twenty-eight hundred dollars in fees versus a hundred and sixty-five, and the, the, the sweet spot is way closer to the one sixty-five. We do have plans on, um, doing this as quickly as possible, and we'll, you know, take over, you have my word that going forward through this summer until we get this done, we will try and rocket through, you know, i- if anybody asks for, uh, a conditional use on outdoor seating, we'll try and get them through as quickly as possible. But it is gonna take time, we do have some plans, um, to do this, and we've directed staff to do that, staff's gonna give us an idea, and then we'll, we'll okay it, change it, and send it to you.
How long will it take you? Can you do this? Huh?
I would say the summer, by the time we get that done. I mean, this is, this is the municipal government at, at work, you know?
Can't do, okay, can't spot check this, or?
I, I, you know, we can, we can put something together, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna put junk on the table for you guys, you know, we're, this, part of our job is to slow things down and think about it, so, you know, this, I, I don't have any good news for somebody that wants to put outdoor seating in this summer.
If you update your zoning, will this make the expense much less?
I would expect it would. Now, the, changing all zoning is, you know, that's a year project, that's at least twelve months, at least.
Can we lead off with this particular issue?
Yeah, we can start with, we can start with this, yeah, we can prioritize this, this is, this is.
So I think that's, we wanna see less expense and quicker action on these restaurants.
I, I, I don't think, I don't think anybody's arguing that, um, people, people in a lot of these cases are underburdened, um, either financially or through permitting, we wanna, we would like to see this done. I like eating, I don't, I, nobody here and, you know, has, you know, cited on the, I only think people should eat inside, you know, part of the deal, that's, you know, we all want this, it's a matter of doing it right.
Well, it's a treat for us to eat outside, 'cause we don't get that opportunity very often.
That's very true.
Any other commissioners? Can we vote on the motion? Would someone care to make the motion? Someone wanna make a motion? Commissioner Baldini.
Uh, this is sort of a double negative. Um, I move that we support or sustain the recommendation of the planning commission.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pro Tem?
Second.
Second.
I don't think we need any more discussion? Any discussion? Discussion, Ms. Doc?
I, I, the only point I wanna make is, as I've said before, I, I have some reluctance, some reluctance about this motion, but I think that the chair of the, the planning commission knows our sense. The strategic planning commission we had earlier, I think, was quite emphatic about giving them the resources, uh, to look at the whole zoning process, they need money and they need support for that, and, um, and I think they understand, they obviously deal with it daily, they understand the, the financial impact, so.
Pro Tem?
Well, I wasn't particularly vocal on this issue, because coming into this meeting, I was kind of on the fence, I understood both sides, and I saw where both sides were coming from and understanding all that, but listening to Taylor and listening to the fact that we're gonna try to make this work and make this quick, and it's, in the quick in the terms of making, doing it right as well, um, I think that we have to keep this process in place during that time until we get this completely set right, so, that's why I will be voting for.
Okay, I am, this was not an easy decision either, um, but the planning commission did do their work, I tend to understand or believe what they say. Uh, Third Street could be a problem, I think that we need to keep the conditional use permit in place until we get this rewriting of the, uh, ordinance, zoning ordinance, and I hope we can do this soon. I would like it sp, see it less expensive and easier to get. Okay, we're gonna vote on the motion. Now, this is a tricky motion, bear with me, correct me if you don't like what I say. If you vote yes, you're gonna favor the DDA request.
No.
That's what it, well, that's, that's what it says there.
That's, that's the recommendation, Your Honor, the, the motion is to deny.
Oh, the motion is different than what's recommended.
The DDA's application, and.
Okay, could I hear the motion one more time? Who made the motion? Tom, you made the motion, could I hear it?
I, I moved that we sustain the recommendation of the planning commission, and their recommendation was to deny the DDA, uh, proposal.
So, so, negative, negative. If you vote yes, we're gonna sustain the decision of the planning commission.
That's the way I'm interpreting it, yes.
Okay. If you vote yes, you sustain, say yes to the D, to the planning commission's decision.
Yes.
If you say no, if you vote no, you support the DDA recommendation that they remove the text, and that'll bring into effect ordinance six forty. Do we have it? I would like a roll call vote on this, because it could be an ordinance.
Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Yes, passes, seven-zero. Next, we move to our second public hearing of the night. That would be a single lot, special assessment, roll number five-eight-three. City clerk, background please.
Yes, Your Honor. Background, chapter forty, section forty dash two-one of the city code requires that, quote, "When an improvement shall have been made by the city upon or in respect to any single premises, the expense of which is chargeable against such premises and the owner thereof under the provisions of this chapter and is not of that class required to be prorated among several lots and parcels of land in a special assessment district, an account of the cost to be charged to the owner shall be reported to the city treasurer, who shall meet, who shall immediately bill the owner if known," end quote. The city code further requires that, "When the city treasurer determines that a number of properties have had outstanding bills for a sufficient time, the treasurer shall notify the city assessor, who shall prepare a single lot assessment roll and schedule a public hearing before the city commission on that roll." Impacted property owners on the attached list have received notification of the time and place of the hearing in accordance with section forty dash two-one of the city code. The commission reviewed this at their meeting of May thirty-first, twenty sixteen, and scheduled a public hearing for this evening. Fiscal effect, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents, plus accruing interest and penalties. Recommendation, following the public hearing, confirm single lot special assessment roll number five-eight-three and authorize the mayor to sign the warrant. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're gonna open this public hearing. It's your chance, your opportunity to address the commission on this item. You have three minutes. We need your name, address, city or township. Does anybody wish to address the commission at this point? Anybody wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Baldini?
Uh, I would, uh, move that the, uh, we confirm the single lot special assessment roll number five-eight-three, and we authorize the mayor to sign the warrant.
Is there a second? Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, no discussion, it's pretty clear, uh, uh, in the explanation of why we're doing this, so.
No discussion.
All those in favor, please say yes.
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 Opposed? We now move to our third and final public hearing of the evening. Public hearing is a request for license to use a municipal property at two-thirteen South Front Street. City clerk, if you'd give us the background, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, Imelda Properties has submitted an application seeking the grant of a license to use a portion of the municipal property north of and ad, adjacent to the building at two-fifteen South Front Street. The stated purpose of the request is for an outdoor patio area for the planned wine bar business at two-fifteen South Front Street. Staff from relevant departments have reviewed the application and have no objections to the request, as it is supported by the community master plan, draft economic development plan, and other initiatives endorsed by the city, as well as there, as well as there are no identified utility or other conflicts. The city commission raised several questions at the May thirty-first, twenty sixteen meeting that led to the scheduling of a public hearing this evening. Staff has provided additional correspondence and materials in an attempt to answer the questions. Fiscal effect, fees for a license to use city property are typically one hundred dollars per year. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing, approve the request, and direct the city attorney to prepare a grant of license to use the requested municipal property. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. First, I would like to call on Dennis Stackwitz, head of, uh, head planner and community development, to clear up a few questions. Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. I was asked, uh, well, like appointed by the city manager, but I was asked to, we met and, and there were a number of questions that were raised at the last hearing, and I'd like to address those at this time, so that before you get into the hearing, some of these may be something that could be asked again, and there'll be answers to it.
Can people hear him better?
Can you hear me? Is that better? Okay, that, the first question that came up, I believe that was left unanswered at the last meeting, was if the Rosewood Walkway is a public park. It is not designated as a public park, uh, the community master plan does have the designations on figure seven-three, so it's, it's not designated as a public park, nor it has been established such by a city ordinance. Um, the second question was if it can be licensed, uh, can we allow alcohol to be consumed? And that license comes through, uh, the current city code permits for, uh, sidewalk license, cafe license, or alcohol license to be issued by the city clerk that permits alcohol service, um, on city property. The third question is, are there any existing examples of city granting this type of license in the past? I know Dave had kinda touched on that last meeting, but there are numerous licenses for the use of city right-of-way, including in the downtown area, and we have put that in the packet, um, both from the standpoint of the page from the city budget that shows where we're receiving income for those, also a, um, an excerpt from the, what we where we're receiving income for those, also a, an excerpt from the, what we call the zoning orders book, even though it's not really a zoning issue, we still track these matters in the Community Development and Planning Office. There are some other businesses that have also obtained sidewalk café permits. Donkers and the Ordock also come to mind. There was a question about the administrative site plan review process as opposed to going through the Planning Commission. This property is located in the downtown Form Base Codes District, which you just had a hearing previously, and outdoor food and beverage service, that is a principal use in that district. And because it is a, there's a change in use or a minor site plan is required, the zoning administrator has the administrative responsibility of approving that plan per the zoning ordinance. There was a question on the construction of the patio prior to licensing, and I really don't have an answer for that other than that's really a concern of the proprietor. We had issued a zoning compliance permit that I had attached to this, to the background information that showed that that approval was not, zoning approval wasn't granted until the license was issued, so. And that's not uncommon. That does happen time to time throughout the city. That's why we have a code enforcement official to go around and see those things. And I think, other than that, that pretty much would cover those questions that we had before, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if anyone wishes to address the Commission on this item, please step to the podium. You've got three minutes. We need name, address, city and/or township.
Good evening. Barry Poulson, 101 North Lakeshore Boulevard. I was, I'm the architect, working for the White Sisters and Daniel and Betsy on the new wine bar. I just want to go over how we got to where we're at, the steps we've gone through.
Barry?
Yes.
Just to be sure, Marquette, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Last time I checked. In May of 2015, the site plan was submitted, reviewed, and approved, including the patio, which we're talking about, with the condition that we had to get a license to be on the city property. This, the site plan, this was the initial time we submitted the plans for approval. So we, one of the conditions was that we add a note on the drawings that all work in the city right-of-way had to be, could only be done after the license was granted. So we did that. So that's right on the cover of the drawings. On June of 2015, the City Commission held a public hearing on this project, including the patio, and the patio on city land, and that grant application was approved. So this is another public hearing. So at that time, that was the approval to submit it to the state for the grant, which Mona orchestrated. On July, the state approved the grant with the patio included. In August of 2015, we put the project out for bids with that note, right on the front page, couldn't miss it, that you couldn't do that work until the license was granted. We received bids. It was a million-dollar budget. We had a million-two, our little bid, so we went to work trimming, you know, uncommon on these renovation projects. During that VE process, value engineering process, we discussed removing the patio, and we went to the state and the state said, no, you can't remove the patio. The patio is one of the most important things, because as Mona mentioned earlier, it's placemaking. These are the spaces that people want to be. This is what makes a downtown look really attractive, and they especially like little tiny alley-like spaces with, you know, food and beverage in them. So they loved this project because that was one of the ingredients. So we said, okay, we'll put it in. Didn't save those dollars. We made, because of the changes we made, we had to come back and do another site plan review process, another administrative one. Only thing, this time, the fee was $1,400 instead of a couple hundred. And then we did have a zoning compliance permit issued in early November, and as Dennis mentioned, that still had that condition. You couldn't do the work in the city right-of-way until the license was granted. So fast forward to April nineteenth, 2016, the application for the license was submitted and received by the city. That's the date it was received, and this was before anything was constructed.
Barry, unfortunately, time is up.
Oh, okay. I'll change my name too. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna violate you for a minute here. I'm just gonna say, it didn't get to the Commission until last meeting, May thirty-first. In between there, the contractor misunderstood that the application submitted meant he could go ahead. I mean, so they poured it in between that time.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Jim Clark, 102 West Washington. First of all, I'd like to say I currently-
City is?
Oh, City of Marquette. And that building is one of downtown's landmarks. It's the Harlow Block Building. I currently serve on the City Board of Review, and prior to that, I served multiple terms on the Downtown Development Authority, and I was on the board when this whole development actually took place. As I said earlier, recreational grants were for the bike path, and the other second recreational grant we got for the downtown area was for the Commons Ice Rink Facility and Building. All of the other grants that funded the walkways, which include the Harlow Walkway, the one next to the Rover, which was Joe Constance's original one, there are two in the South Block of, South, South Front, excuse me, West Washington, 200 Block of West Washington. There are two on the south side, one next to the Portside Restaurant, which has outdoor dining, and one next to the parking lot. And then we also put private-public walkway through the Nestor Block Building and the 100 Block of the South Front Street, which was also EDC grant money. And when the city received these grant funds through the DDA in cooperation with the DDA, the land or the trestle right-of-way was basically an abutment. It was never identified as a public park at all or at any time. In fact, we didn't even have the funding to remove the abutment. The only thing that was going to be removed was the structural steel under the agreement with Canadian National Railway. So there are now three grants awarded to the Rosewood Walkway. One was from the Michigan Department of Transportation for removal of the abutment because it was a transportation hazard, and when they abandoned the business right-of-way, they took care of that hazard through public funding and grants that the DDA matched. The second grant was for the reconstruction of the walkway or, you know, they're not, it's not a park. It's a commercial corridor walkway connecting private buildings with no parking to public buildings so they can be redeveloped and reutilized and made better tax-paying citizens. I mean, this building was a blighted downtown building that now has a million-two invested into it. This is exactly why the city received the EDC grant. The EDC grant, when we received money to fix this up specifically attached our report, which the city endorsed, that said, this is the type of project we want to see happen. I fully endorse, I fully support this. I'm really kind of frustrated with the onerous processes you're putting through small businesses. It's, it's in contravention to what we've done for 30 years and the framework we've built with the DDA and how successful we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mona Lang, Executive Director for the Downtown Development Authority, speaking to you again about outdoor seating, right?
Address, address, Mona.
203 South Front Street in Marquette is my office. 175 Pineview Drive in Marquette is my home address. I just wanted to give you some information, some background, and also, the DDA does support the Commission's approval of this license if you choose to do that. As was stated, this was a project, the Rosewood Walkway was a project of the DDA. It was built with grant funds and TIF funds. It was also relocated because, as we know, the patio did go in here prior to license. That was a mistake. When we built the Rosewood Walkway, it was a mistake. It was on the adjacent, happened to be, the survey was wrong, so it was on the adjacent property's, property owner's property, so we had to go back and revise that. So as we know, we do make mistakes. Things do get out of sync, and so I'd just like you to, to think about that, and also that we, we say that we want to encourage young businesses and young people to stay in our community, to open businesses, to create jobs, and in this case, we have a young couple who already own one successful business in our, in our city, and they are willing to invest and open a second business. And the outdoor seating is very important to their business and to their business plan. So I really encourage you to really look at this and to approve this license for them, and to allow them to get moving forward, to get their liquor license, and to open their business so that we can all enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, Katie White. I'm one of the co-owners of 215 South Front Street. I want to relay a brief history of our project. I truly hope my story is not relevant to our patio situation, but given the conflict-
Address, please.
Oh, my home address is 162 Bedford Road in Chapakla, New York. So given the conflict around our project, I thought it might be worthwhile to go back to where this truly started. My mom and dad moved to Marquette with my big sister Anne in 1968. My dad played hockey for the Iron Rangers and worked odd jobs so that he could do what he loved to do and take care of his family. Sarah and I were born here and all three of us were raised here. Norm Peltow taught me how to do math, and Mrs. Davis tried to teach me how to speak publicly. Mr. Peltow, wherever you are, thank you. I will never forget how to cross-multiplier. And Mrs. Davis, let's just see how this goes. My mom and dad ended up buying a television store that some of you may remember called Color Vision. My parents bought a house on the east side, a small little colonial, built in the 50s, wedged between two big, beautiful Victorians. Sarah and I babysat for the neighborhood kids, and ironically enough, our neighbors then are our neighbors now, which leaves me scratching my head, wondering, were the peanut butter sandwiches that bad? Ultimately, my mom and dad's TV store was supplanted by the superstore. Remember Crazy Lenny? And my parents had to find new ways to take care of the family. My mom was the finance and insurance rep at Public Service Garage for years. My dad had to find new endeavors, which ultimately led us out of town in 1989, when I was going into my junior year of high school. My sisters had already gone to college and my parents and I headed south. All of us dispersed across the country. Flash forward 25 years, the sisters came home to see the dog races in 2014, and we pressed our noses against the glass at 215 South Front. We couldn't help but see potential beyond the blight. Anne especially couldn't let it go even after we returned to our respective homes, and so we decided to take the plunge. Soon after, Mona from the DDA was on board, and she told us to draw the dream. Of course, her encouragement was designed to inspire investment in downtown, and we took the bait. And with the help of Mona and the City of Marquette, we secured a Community Development Block Grant. But even with grant funds, our personal investment ballooned well beyond what we had ever intended. Even mom has chipped in, and it was a big project to take on from out of state. For managing, we want to say thank you to Barry Poulson, our project manager, and Gunlock Champion, our general contractors for getting us through this. We're almost there. We understand we need to wait for our day in court to hear the fate of the yellow wall, but tonight, I hope that the Commission will approve our application for a license to use the patio on the Rosewood Walkway. The patio is integral to the overall project. It was designed to entice customers into Daniel's establishment and create a destination for patrons that we think will boost foot traffic and commerce to the downtown area. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hello again. I'm Sarah Whitehall, 5 Emerson Road, Severna Park, Maryland, and I just wanted to address the patio specifically. In terms of the patio, I did some investigation, and there was a misinterpretation regarding the timing of the license application by both the contractor and the architect, who are well-respected, seasoned construction professionals in Marquette. We sincerely apologize for the oversight. They were simply committed to finishing the project on time and did not mean to disrespect this process. We since, the patio was included in the original site plan, as has already been discussed, to promote foot traffic downtown. The plan was approved by the city after a public hearing. The patio was built to code according to the approved site license and the scope of the MEDC anti-blight grant. Given the complexity of this project, this oversight paperwork in paperwork submission seems quite small. Our tenant built his business plan around the approved site plan with the assumption that the patio would be granted a license. We sincerely hope you will overlook this honest mistake and approve the license for the patio as previously discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. You're in Malankin, 8 Marquette Drive, here in the City of Marquette. I distinctly remember two weeks ago standing here and Mr. Conley saying that after I have my public hearing, I will personally make the motion to approve this, and so Mr. Conley does have his public hearing. We also found out differently that, that it was mentioned last time that it was a public park, and in fact, it's not a public park, so that takes one little scenario out of it as well. And so I hope Mr. Conley is a man of his word, and now he has had his public hearing, and he will approve this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ruth Almain. I live at 319 Eagles Nest Road in the township. Mayor and Commissioners and staff, thank you for your time. I had the good pleasure of being able to work in the downtown area for, for two and a half years, right across the parking lot from the building that we're talking about. And one day, as I was out coming back from lunch and shopping, all of a sudden I looked and I thought, what is this cool little space here? And it was the Rosewood Parkway. And it just felt like this little magical place to me. It reminded me of places I'd seen in Santa Fe, right off the square. And I, I was just impressed that someone had, had the vision to say, let's use this space and make it somewhere we can enjoy, where all of us can enjoy. It just seemed like a really incredible thing to find that right here in the downtown, we had this space. One day, I even, I even sat down, because I thought, I don't know if people use this or not, but I feel like somebody should sit in it, because really, it's, if you haven't been there, take the time. Because someone had some vision and some energy to create that space for us. And, and I was thrilled again, as someone who was in the downtown and worked downtown, like the rest of us, to think that the backroom building was gonna be gone, and we were gonna have something else there, and something that we could be proud of in our downtown area. Now, I'm, I was here when you discussed this previously because my friend Sarah invited me to come, and I am appreciative that there's people who want to invest their money downtown, and I think, again, we're all on the same page about we want people to invest money in the downtown and make it something we can be proud of. And when it's in all the magazines, we might say, please come and spend your money and go home, but we are all proud to say, this is a place where we live, and people want to live here, and they want to come and visit. And so, again, I would, as I've listened to the discussion, it sounds like, again, people followed the procedures. They did everything to the best of their knowledge. This was all good intentioned, and it sounds like also that, that you have the ability, again, to approve this and help this move forward, and I recommend that you do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Frank Schifferd, 03501 Half East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. The recommendation on your agenda supplement reads that you approve the request and direct the city attorney to grant, prepare a grant of license. It should read, "At the Commission's discretion." Was this a clerical error, or is this item already a done deal? Your supplement also doesn't mention that the patio is already there. The building is nicely renovated and complements our downtown, except for the yellow siding. It's insane that a property owner can't access a side of her own building without being robbed of $30,000. Of all the accounts of greed this board has heard over the years, this one ranks high as a prime example of what we don't want in Marquette. Let the course force them to allow the sisters' reasonable access to improve our south entrance to downtown. If there's no ordinance to protect the property owners, this board needs to work on one. Ironically, the neighbors will benefit more from this nicer-looking wall than anyone else. May 28th, one of the sisters told us she'd applied for their permit from Maryland and received it. I believe her, which begs the question as to why measures aren't in place to prevent impacts to our public spaces without due public process. A patio seems workable, but we lose the neat corridor-like view from Front Street east toward the Ordock. More of the view than necessary is occupied by the oversized components and the layout, though unintended, makes the space look as if it belongs solely to the business. Please consider thinner, more stylish materials or safely landscape the area to eliminate the railing. At least remove the gate and latch. There's no foreseen need for a gate, and the wide opening makes the patio look publicly accessible. The less hardware there is, the better the linear effect will be. Also consider replacing or covering the cement with something more earth-toned and worthy of this prime location. May 31st, Mr. Conley was- May 31st, Mr. Conley was astute to detect this latest breach of public process, not the first time he's picked up on something that the rest missed. Mr. Plort suggests we allow the patio because it's already built, but from now on, this won't be allowed. We've already had too many from now on, like the state police tower and ADA ramp on the East Washington Hill and a fence in East Ridge, all installed before permitted. Most analogous tonight is the home at the foot of East Crescent Street, where the family planted a garden on public property and a row of tall shrubs makes it appear as if the land belonged solely to them, similar to tonight's case. The sisters are commended for their contribution to Marquette and for their efforts to access the south wall, but this board is asked to allow the public to contribute ideas to whatever is built on public property before the fact. So please handle this hearing as if it isn't there yet. Our patio deserves the same quality of work that said sisters put into the building. Provide outdoor seating by all means. Please at least remove the gate.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello, Bryce Burge, 1407 Lincoln, city of Marquette. One, I just wanted to say thank you for having the informational session before the start of the public comment. I thought that was very needed based on the fact that there were so many questions that were raised up last night, or last meeting, not just by commissioners, but by people in public comment. There's lots of questions still about this project and I know that there's an ongoing fight and makes it hard to talk about. But there's something called the first, first, the free press effect. There we go. Where when you have one group of people that's really open and honest about something and then another group of people that are not as forthwith with their side of it, it can cause a social shift about who to back or who to support. And I think that, that kind of is happening here a little bit with the overarching process of this, of this patio and of the project at whole. And I don't really, I don't really have a strong opinion on any of them, but I know that there's a lot of younger people that have seen $30,000 mentioned. That's considerably more than what the average person that works downtown makes, especially if they're in the service industry. It makes a lot of questions about this and I think that if the patio was just kind of done, it would add a little bit of positivity to all of us in this town that needs something positive, not just because of this project, but because of everything right now. It would be nice to see something go well. And I think that this is a perfect example to just say, this is, everybody's on the general same page and we can step up and, and move forward from here. I think that would have a really long standing effect positivity, which is something that is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the commission? Is there anybody else? See none, we're going to close this public hearing? Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Conley?
I move that the commission suspend the rules for the purpose, purpose of discussion of this topic.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plort?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? There is no discussion. We just vote, excuse me. We'll go to a vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
No.
Pass is 6-1. Okay. Commissioner Conley?
I'll start out and please bear with me. I think we're going to get there, but I have some questions. I have some concerns and need to clear up a misstatement. But I think you'll, people will like where we're going with this. First of all, the patio was not a part of the materials that were submitted to the city commission. We acted on the grant request. It was not part of the site plan that was submitted to us. We didn't pass this. Okay? The first time it came to us was two weeks ago, when it was already built. And I also like to clear up that this was, it was brought out that this was built without a license. Construction continued today. I witnessed it. Something was going on. I'm not going to go into the details. Work didn't stop. You would have thought that somebody with, an experienced architect and a big time builder would know the rules and say, okay, we're out of the rules. We're going to stop. I'm annoyed, but I'm not going to let this annoyance prevent good policy. But I don't think it ought to happen again because it's not always going to turn out well with me anyway. So, I don't believe it was an honest mistake. I think it was an intentional way around the rules, particularly when we pointed it out two weeks ago. Okay. I have some questions though. Can we, to the city attorney, can, do we have to grant this license to the owner of the property or can we grant it to the business that will actually benefit from it?
No, these licenses are to the owner of the property. That's the purpose of the license, to give an owner a property to come on to city land and build something. And I think that's what I'm hearing here. They're building something. Whether it's, you know, whether the tenant is involved or not, we're always going to want to look to the owner for this license.
Okay. Can we make the granting of a license contingent on the occupancy of the proposed wine bar?
We always put conditions in our licenses. I mean, we, we try to be specific as to what is being granted. I mean, we've had requests to put cement slabs and generators on our property. We've had requests to build walkways and ramps and we always put stuff, we'll put things in the license that talk about the maintenance requirements, the type of, even the type of materials if it's relevant. So we could put conditions in. You have to understand also that a license is really something that is given at will. We can terminate it anytime that it doesn't meet what we feel is appropriate as far as the reason we granted the license in the first place. So this is, this is something that can be terminable at, at, at the will of the commission.
So we can time limit the, at least the initial license and say, we'll review this in a year?
Well, we tend, we don't tend to do that. We give the license, it's just you have the prerogative to terminate it if something happens that, you know, is contrary to what the, the reason for the license in the first place. But a license by definition is not a term. Then it becomes something else.
The, the reason I'm asking about who we grant the license to is, let's just suppose and hope that this wine bar is so wildly successful that they need to build a building that encompasses all of Barra G Avenue or something like that and need to move out of this relatively small premise. And a tobacco shop wants to move in, wouldn't make that patio a smoking pad. Do we have to allow that? And the owners say, well, we have a license to use the patio.
No, we can, we can make that a condition. We don't have to allow that.
So we can, we can say this is for the specific purpose of a wine bar?
Yeah, the purpose is to have an outdoor patio for food and beverage or whatever it's called, if it's a wine bar.
Can we restrict smoking on, on this patio since it's our property?
Do we have an outdoor smoking ordinance in place right now?
I don't know if it regulates this or not.
If we don't, then I probably, I would say no. If we don't now, I mean, we can't discriminate in the sense of putting a condition on a piece of property that we don't have another-
What if it's our property? It's our property.
But we have other properties that we've given licenses to. And we want to apply them to all of those properties equally. I just think it would be difficult perhaps to sustain if we got into a dispute over that. I'm not saying we couldn't, but I, I, my, my gut tells me that unless we're going to apply it uniformly across the board to all of our properties, then that gives, that's a problem.
I'm going to follow your advice. I mean, you're our attorney, so I, I'm not contesting. I'm just trying to get specific and see if we can craft a, a, a motion here. If smoking becomes a problem, we can terminate the license. Is that right?
Right. The license will always be at will.
So we can, we can pull the license if we have numerous complaints of people smoking?
That'll be up to the commission.
It's up to the commission, okay. Now, I went around and looked at a few places that have outdoor food and beverage, specifically Black Rocks that has food and beverage. Vangos, for instance, and I think Portside, all of them require not an entrance from the sidewalk. You have to go into the establishment and then go out the side door onto the patio. And that might be a requirement of Liquor Control Commission, but the other establishments do not allow direct access from a sidewalk into a patio, outdoor, particularly alcoholic beverages. And that, I, as I, as I've done the reading and the research, is for the purpose of limiting underage drinking, to keep minors from coming in through the, at least from what I've read, to keep them from coming in the side gate. Can we say, no, you can't, you can't enter this, the patio that we own from the side? You have to come in through the main entrance?
When you say the patio that we own?
Well, we, we own the land.
We own the land, but not the patio. We would be granting a license to construct and, and, and use that patio.
Can we put a restricted license that says you have to enter this patio from the, the main business?
And if Liquor Control requires that, then I guess we don't really have a choice. I find it difficult to believe because I've been to a lot of outdoors patios where we've never entered the building, ever.
Well, maybe not in, certainly in other countries, that's pretty common, but maybe not in, in Marquette.
Could be. I just, that, that, that's one I'm not familiar with.
I, I just looked and I said, maybe, and I don't know these, but I mean, why did the Black Rocks construct a fence across what otherwise would have been a sidewalk? Or Vangos, for instance, or Portside? You know, there's not direct public access. You have to go in through, there must be a reason.
It, it could be a Liquor Control-
It's a Liquor Control issue, okay. But would we be able to put that stipulation in our license?
To the extent that, that it's required by Liquor Control, certainly.
Can we? I, I, the Black Rocks has, and this is different because it's on private property, they have a conditional use permit that allows them to operate from noon to 11:00 PM. Can we restrict the hours on the use of this land if we, within our license?
I would think that you could. We haven't had a situation before where we've had a license with our restrictions that I'm aware of, but again, I would, you know, I want to take a look at that, but it would seem reasonable. Do we have a, do we have a rule for outdoor liquor?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. That's the sidewalk cafe permits with alcohol are issued by the clerk's office.
Okay. Okay. And, and the, the last question I have for the city attorney is, can we restrict music or particularly amplified music within that, with respect to the fact that there are people living just down at the end of the walkway and the echoes and the tunnel effect of the music?
Again, I, I think that would probably depend on what our noise ordinance reads and maybe some other things that I'm not aware of. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, we're, the purpose of the license is to allow the construction of this patio. There may be some other licenses like this business license to sell food and beverage. There may be some other controls that the city has or the state has with respect to smoking and noise and all those other things. But the purpose of this license is to grant the owner of this property the right to construct a patio on city property.
Okay. Thank you for answering my questions and I am good to my word. I will make this motion when it comes time. I'd like to see it happen, but I just had certain concerns and I, they are not being, they're not sustainable, but I just had to have them said first.
Anyone else wish to comment? Commissioner Frazier?
I think the architect could find ways to make the patio look pretty. If that's concerns of people, I think the architect has got many ways to make the patio look pretty. I hope that the, the owners will have to jump through all the hoops that everybody else has had to jump through when they own a business and they want to, excuse me, have outdoor patio. Excuse me, they have to jump through a lot of hoops and, but the planning commission and everybody else to, to jump, jump through all those hoops and I hope they have to, as part of the rule, they may have to jump through those hoops. I think the patio is a good idea. I don't see, judging by the drawing, it takes up that much of the sidewalk or anything and I think it's part of it is our, our fault for not, for somebody not bringing it to us, or bringing it to our attention when we were approving the plan that there was a pattern that maybe set out into city property that we didn't know of at the time. It may have been something we missed, but hopefully it can get taken care of eventually, so.
Commissioner Cam Benzi?
I'm going to start with growing up, working for my father, who was a land surveyor. I, I would say every other week, we saw something that was built out of order, way over the property line, half a garage. So, to me, I think this was an honest mistake with Gunlock Champion moving ahead before they actually had the official license. It's a confusing process. I was on the planning commission and I had to listen carefully when Dave Stensis was talking the other night. But I agree that, you know, his interpretation was correct. I mean, these are administrative rights that if you're in the zoning district, you meet the criteria, you will be granted this, which our planning department did. I'm going to go back to the dumpster and when we approved that in the city commission, I had no idea that there was a conflict between landowners. I, I had no idea that we were approving that to sit on the street because there couldn't be a resolution, you know, to sit in, in the parking lot or rent space or the price or whatever it is. I think at that point, if we knew there was a conflict moving forward, the city commission could help. Now that it's tied up in court, there's not much we can do. I know both sides. I know people on both sides of this. I don't want to get in the middle of who said what or, or what's right or what's not. I do know this has put Mona through a lot of stress. She's done a great job with these grants. I know Dave explained very well that Nate, Dave Stensis. And Gunlock Champion, I mean, they're just trying to move fast and expedite the process. So I, I don't think there's any blame for this. And I'm not going to make the motion. I, I will let Commissioner Conley make it, but I will not vote for a motion that, that puts special, what do you call them? Conditions on, on the license. You know, this isn't a conditional use permit and we do not have anything to do with conditional use permits in this type of a situation. I mean, this, this is, like Ron said, to build the structure and I'm going to vote for that, but I will not vote for any other conditions put on this that we don't give to any other person that comes before us. I think that's unfair.
Pro Tem Reynolds?
Well, I agree with Commissioner Cam Benzi. And as at the last meeting we had, I voted no for a public hearing because I thought that it was only fair to just continue on with this structure, how we have treated every other person that's come in here asking for something like this. We ha, it's awesome that the White Sisters have come back and decided to do something cool with this property and that the Rutz family has decided to continue on and do better things for the city of Marquette. And this patio is a very trivial thing that they need to continue this process. And as Barry Polson pointed out, the state of Michigan indicated that without this patio, the grant might have been in trouble. And I think that that in itself, we signed on to that grant, we agreed to that grant, we have to agree to this. And I look forward to attending this place and I will be voting exactly as Commissioner Cam Benzi pointed out. I will vote for this license as it's stated in the recommendation in the supplement.
Commissioner Plort?
I'm a little dubious that the, the mistake, there was a mistake by professionals like Mr. Polson or Gunlock Champion, but be that as it may, I, I thank the people who came up for public comment. I thought the public comment was very, very pertinent and I took a lot from the public comment. One of the things that I took from the public comment is that this is a project that everybody seems to want. It's a good project. I like the project. I'm, I'm, it's, it's also a very individual and unique type of situation, which I think is a good situation. I agree with Commissioner Cam Benzi and I agree with Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds. I will support this as it's written and I don't think we should put any conditions on the license. I think we'll let the city do their job. And as the city attorney mentioned, if there is an issue later on based on the situation, we can always review it. But I'm, I'm in favor of it and I will vote for the motion as, as, if it's made as, as it's printed.
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, your honor. I want to thank our staff also for providing us the background information to clarify and clear up some information that some of us were dubious about. to clarify, um, and clear up some information that some of us were dubious about at the last meeting. Um, whether mistakes were made or not made, but I, I do agree with Commissioner Cam Benzi, having watched things around the city and other communities in the state, things happen. They're not always done nice and neat and proper like we would hope. Uh, and I don't think we should treat this license any different than the other licenses we provide in the state. I do not want to get into micromanaging. Um, that's why we have professional staff. If we begin to sense that there's a problem, it comes back to us. I mean, we see that all the time, we get phone calls, people send us emails, uh, we ask the staff then to evaluate those and look at them. Uh, so I'm, I'm prone to, not prone, I, I will vote for a clean, uh, permit, uh, without any special restrictions pertaining to this one. And, um, uh, I, I think, uh, we, we got some clarification and I think maybe we all learned some things about licensing and conditional permits also, so, thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, you know, it's, it's always good to ask questions and clear everything up before we move forward on this, so I'm glad we got that accomplished tonight. My position is I think I'm in, I, I know I'm in favor of this project. Um, the Sisters have taken this old dilapidated building downtown and they're changing it into something that we can be proud of. It's the entryway into the city and I, you know, it's just, we're going to have outside activity and that's, again, what we want. So it's, it's only going to be for the good of the city. So I hope this project continues on. Could we call for a mo-?
Uh, excuse me, your honor?
Yes.
The city manager, I think, has his hand up.
City manager, would you comment?
Just, just to help a little bit with, uh, Dennis helping me over there with his, um, paying attention. The, uh, to help answer some of these questions, the city, uh, code, uh, has a sidewalk cafe curfew of 11:00 PM already in that code, which would apply in this case. Um, the same part of the code has provisions for barriers and separating the space, uh, from the public. Uh, in other words, the fencing, there are requirements for that kind of fencing and if I'm not mistaken, the Liquor Control Commission also requires some limited access as well, so I think that would be well protected. And, uh, just a reminder that the noise ordinance is, uh, still in place and, uh, it states that, uh, the noise can be, uh, disturbing 24 hours a day, but especially between 11:00 PM and, and 6:00 AM. So I mean, there is an emphasis in that ordinance to allow the police department to act if they can't, uh, if the noise gets out of hand, so, thank you.
Are you ready for motion?
Would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Conley?
We've had our public hearing and I, I thank the indulgence of the commission for granting this. When we, this is something that we have reaffirmed earlier tonight, public hearings for things like this. Um, and I'm satisfied. Uh, I moved that the city commission approve the request for license to use municipal property at 213 South Front Street and direct the city attorney to prepare a grant of license to use the requested municipal property.
Is there a second? Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed. That carries, seven zero. Tonight we have two presentations. First presentation by CEO Ray Johnson, waiting impatiently.
It was, it was, uh, quite enlightening.
Thank you. It is on Innovate Marquette, a Smart Zone update. Ray, if you would.
Thank you, your honor. Thank you commissioners and the staff and, and those that have stuck around to, uh, listen to, uh, a progress update that, uh, I'm going to provide on the activities and the focus of the Smart Zone here. Um, I have a slideshow presented, so I'm told that it'll come up any second, there it is. So I'll go through that. I, I know, um, I have more than three minutes, right? Not much more, okay, so I'll go fa- fast. I think the last time I was here was in January, I think, it may have been. Uh, a lot has happened since then and so I, I wanted to go through it, a, a couple of things that we've, we've done here and I'll focus on, on two pieces. One is the strategic plan that we put together, uh, both, uh, from, uh, me as the CEO and the, in the board, which members here are today as well, and the progress and some recent accomplishments that I think you'll be pretty, um, impressed with. So a couple of things, just to start out with, you know, I think I've always said that people who have, have heard me talk before, that the process of building an ecosystem around entrepreneurship and small business, uh, and the development of entrepreneurs and tech-based entrepreneurships and startups is a long-term process. It's 10 years, some say it's 20 years. And my own experience in Austin, Texas, in Silicon Valley, and most recently the last 10 years in Boulder, Denver, has proven that out. And so I think we have to look at this as a long-term, uh, 10-year process. And with that, we focused as a board on seven key, uh, major items and that's, one, collaborating with, uh, strategic partners and community stakeholders that I'm going to talk a little bit about. These are the assets of our community, some of them are here today. Uh, we serve tech-based entrepreneurs, that's our mission as a Smart Zone. There are many different entrepreneurs out there, our focus is tech-based, although our programs are open to most all. And so we like to be inclusive in that, um, and we also are looking to help create these tech-based businesses and to create startups and ultimately jobs, it's all about jobs. And then finally, what, what I've learned in the process, uh, living and working in Austin, working in Silicon Valley, Boulder, Denver, and downstate, Grand Rapids, Ann Arbor, is that the beginning part is around entrepreneurial activities, networking events, um, education, conferences, seminars. And this is going to be a big important piece of what we do, uh, as part of Innovate Marquette. And then the other part is communicating and outreach and there's many different channels and I can tell you that for us, it's going to be very important for those to be connected to us through social media and we'll have a big focus on that as well. And then to obtain additional resources. I know we're very appreciative of the taxpayers' money through the TIF program, the city's money, but we have been able to garner additional funds and there's other grants out there that we're working on to supplement those resources. So we're doing that as well. And then finally, with those resources, we're going to manage those effectively. And so this is what we as a board, we as the Innovate Market Smart Zone is really focused on, these seven key initiatives to create this ecosystem. So let me go very quickly. Um, the grant that we were awarded in May, we were awarded $90,000 for a two-year period to help defray some of the costs involved in running the Smart Zone. Uh, it's a one-for-one match, so we have to contribute as well and it helps cover expenses, uh, for the Gatekeeper, which is me, the CEO, it's a Gatekeeper grant and it covers expenses like salary and fringe and travel when I go downstate and other necessary, um, expenditures around equipment and direct expenses. So this is a big deal. This is really, you know, this is real money that we can now supplement the, the budget that we have, uh, today and going forward for the next two years. So we're very, very glad to have done that. Um, a key point of all of this is around strategic partners and stakeholders in our community and I want to highlight a couple. Northern Michigan, of course, and I'll talk a little bit about that. Invented NMU, which is, which is a very, very innovative program that we have in our community and if you haven't been there, I suggest you go. My work with Michigan Tech and Michigan, uh, the Michigan, uh, Smart Zone in Houghton, Hancock has been ongoing, so we're helping that community as well, they're helping us. And then, uh, we're involved with Forty Below, which is a unique organization, most of you know about it, and partnering on sponsoring some entrepreneurial activities with that constituency and our constituency, which is, which is, uh, really starting to, to broaden, uh, the scope of what we can, what we can do and where we can touch. And then, of course, the, uh, the chamber, Jason is here. Uh, Jason and I have, I call ourselves co-conspirators and conspirators in the entrepreneurial, uh, community and so we often brainstorm on different ideas that we can bring to the community. And then most recently, we have an angel network and these are high net worth individuals that are interested in supporting with their own money, funding potential startups that, uh, that we build out of this ecosystem. And so this has really come forward in the last, you know, six months since, uh, since we've been, we've been at this. And so I'm going to touch on these very quickly, um, on the activities and the events and the educational programs. Uh, I mentioned, uh, Jason and I came up with this idea of having this meetup where we had, uh, the Smart Zone, the Chamber, Invented NMU, Accelerate UP, the LSCP and Northern Initiatives, all pump out an invite to the community to come and learn about the resources that we have for all entrepreneurs, for all small businesses, for all startups, not just, uh, tech startups. And I think we had close to 100 people show up that one day and I've gotten a couple clients out of it, I'm sure Jason has, I, I know Dave Olala and others have. And so that really kind of kicked off our year. And then I moved into a program that I wanted to pilot, which was around taking entrepreneurs that are interested in doing startups through a seven to nine-week process of coaching on everything, on, you know, forming your company, intellectual property, the value proposition and cul- culminating in a, uh, in a pitch deck. We had four teams that applied, they paid $200 each, they came every Wednesday night for nine weeks for three hours, very dedicated group, and, and they learned a heck of a lot about launching a business. And I, I'm happy to say that, uh, you know, I think a couple of them are really going to go forward with their ideas. This included a Shark Tank-like, uh, capstone, uh, event, uh, Jason was one of our judges, we had a couple of other community members as, as judges and we're going to do that again. That really has shown that, that there's an interest for this kind of educational and coaching. And then, you know, one of the first things most entrepreneurs ask about is the law, the legal ramifications, how do I start a business? What do I form? What's the operating agreement look like? You know, do, is it an LLC? Should it be an S corp? Should it be a C corp? These are all things that lawyers who have been in this business know quite well what to do and we've, we've, we've gotten lawyers from downstate and locally to help, uh, you know, teach our entrepreneurs about, uh, these kinds of things as well. And then government fu- funding for technology. There's, there's close to $2.5 billion of government funding for small businesses that we have to learn how to go after. And so we brought, we brought in a seminar and we, we talked about that, uh, just a couple of weeks ago. And then my favorite, of course, is Entrepreneurs on Tap. So once a month, uh, we invite, uh, the community members to the ORDoc where we host, uh, a session on, on lots of different entrepreneurial activities and, and concepts. Um, you know, it started out with 20 or 30 and consistently now we get 35 or 40 people show up once a month on, on, on ideas such as, you know, startup partner founder agreements, um, taking a product idea from Napkin to, to launch, uh, you know, managing your digital workshop and I think next, uh, next week on the, uh, on the 22nd, uh, folks from Elegant Seagulls are going to be talking about branding and marketing your company. So these are the kind of things that our community and our entrepreneurs are interested in. And we've taken that on the road, I've done this up in Houghton to that community, I've done three or four of these up in Houghton. And then I mentioned our, our angel networks. If you're a high net worth individual or know folks that are interested in supporting, uh, investment in entrepreneurs, our next meeting is June 21st at the Landmark. We'll have four pitches. Last meeting, you can see in the top left corner, we had three companies pitch that are out raising money. I think a couple of those will be very successful. And now we are part of this startup angel network, which is becoming, uh, organized throughout the state of, uh, of Michigan to be able to pump, uh, different ideas and different entrepreneurial startups into this group of early seed, pre-seed investment through these angel groups. So we're pretty happy about that. And then I'll finish up with, uh, you know, one of the important things is the, is the NMU relationship with the Business College and the entrepreneurship, uh, curriculum going on there, the innovation and research, uh, that we're starting to look at and find if there are tech-based businesses there. And then, of course, Invented NMU, which is a unique program. We kicked that off, if you recall, during the UP 200, uh, with Governor Rick Snyder, keynote address and the MEDC speaking. Uh, we had a great panel, we had great, uh, in spite of the blizzard, we had, uh, we had great attendance. And I think I'll end it with one more comment and this is from the governor that said, you know, around the Invented NMU concept, that he'd like to see this scaled and, and replicated throughout the state. And so, you know, as a Smart Zone, we're working with the university to, to respond to an RFP that's been out and, and hopefully garner some additional funds that would allow, uh, that program to grow. So I'll finish my last slide and I hope, you know, I haven't used up too much of your time, is the metrics that we're measured by. And so, uh, you know, I'd, I'd like to say that, you know, over the course of the last six, seven months, we've had 640 attendees addressed or engaged at our entrepreneurial events. Now, there are some repeat offenders, of course. Uh, I think some come all the time, but we see every month, every, every event, new faces, new people. And so that's, that's very encouraging. I'm typically working, or it has been in the beginning, this will probably taper off, with about 15 different entrepreneurial ideas, uh, between here and Houghton, uh, helping companies in a, in a, in a sort of a CEO-in-residence kind of, uh, coaching and consulting basis. Um, we had four startups in our pilot launch. I hope when we do it next time, there'll be eight. We've, uh, been able to create now three market-based new companies, uh, that you'll hear more about the next time I'm invited back. And, you know, two new jobs so far. Now, that doesn't seem like a lot, but I, I can tell you, in the early stages, this is good stuff and it'll extrapolate as we, as we dig deeper and we expand our, our program. Um, keep in mind that, that our community is a bootstrapping and this is, you know, these are bootstrapping and moodlining entrepreneurial company. These aren't people that are quitting their day jobs to go do this. And so this is a unique, uh, set of, of capabilities and skills and education that's to help that kind of group. And so we're going to gear our programs to that, that community. So I mentioned, you know, the, uh, the social media, you know, follow us on Facebook, you know, uh, you can follow us on Twitter, connect to us on LinkedIn, um, share with us on Instagram and, um, and certainly, um, um, you know, we'll be, we'll be pushing out our, uh, activities and our, uh, events through that, that media channel. So I have more, but I'll, I'll leave it at that and, uh, open it up for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ray. Commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Frazier?
I thought that Jason shouldn't be one of your judges for your lunch, launch pad, but maybe you should say that Jason was one of your graduates of the launch pad. Use him as like an example, instead of being just a judge. I mean, we all know his, his city experience helped him get his business started, but maybe you could just fib a little bit and say Jason was one of your graduates of your launch pad and use him as a, as a example.
I think he could teach the course. Based on his judging, I think he can teach the course. So it was, it was, he had, he got great insights, uh, he had, and his insights were, you know, um, they were, uh, they were relevant to our community and our entrepreneurs and that's important. That's important.
Commissioner Conley?
Thank you for what you're doing. You're helping us diversify our economy and helping it grow. Uh, and those of us who have lived here for many years realize that we were, sometimes had a one-track mind and that we were starting to fade away and you're helping revitalize that. It's been said that the UP's biggest export is young people and you're helping to reverse that. And I think soon that your metric will be jobs, jobs created, uh, and I, which means in, with the type of jobs you're creating, it means young people who are able to stay in the community and, uh, and grow with us. And thank you for doing the work that you're doing.
Thank you, appreciate that, that, that comment and that insight. Thank you.
Pro Tem Reynolds?
I also would like to give my thanks. Um, I think those metrics look pretty amazing for being such a small amount of time, honestly. And just also, um, I've heard nothing but good, I've had lots of people in my age range go to Entrepreneurs on Tap and they...
Oh, great.
Everybody has said that it was a good time, they learned a lot of things, but I did have a question with that. Um, because I know that you have presenters, like you said, Elegant Seagulls will be doing the next one.
Yep.
So are these presenters, are they just coming forward offering the service to present to people for free or do you have to...
No, no, that's, that's... No, no, that's, that's a good point. They are, they are. You know, uh, you know, people come, they see the, the dynamic that's going on, they have, uh, they have expertise to share. And that's one of the things that, that we learn about entrepreneurship, is entrepreneurs teach other entrepreneurs. And this is what we're trying to foster. And, you know, the last two presenters came forward, uh, from, uh, from, um, you know, having attended or heard about it and said, "I have an, I have a, a skill set, a capability that I'd like to share with that, uh, that audience. Can I, can I be a keynote?" I mean, I have enough material for the next two years to do these, okay? But it's, it's aw- it's awesome to have some local people, uh, show up with, uh, capabilities that, uh, you know, complement that. So, it's, it's turned out very well.
Commissioner Baldini?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you, Ray, and thank you for what you're doing. Uh, Ray made an interesting comment. Whenever you put these things in, people say, "Well, you've been in existence for a month. How many jobs have you created?" Having had some association with, uh, Michigan Tech and their Smart Zone, uh, they started off very slow.
Yeah, 14 years ago.
Yeah, 14 years ago. I was there when Governor Granholm and that made the announcement, and everybody's saying, "Oh, yeah, sure, another one of these projects."
Yeah.
But it did, started off, but it's, it, the strength of it is that you're building five jobs here, eight jobs there, maybe four jobs there, and it, it does give some, some strength to the community. So, if somebody does fail, it doesn't collapse the community like we're so accustomed with our mining projects in the old days. And, and the Western UP, the same thing.
Sure, yeah.
And it'll come along, and, uh, there's some excitement about it. And I think it's a great thing with our university, our medical facility, uh, to attract and keep young people here.
Yeah, and that's one of our challenges. Thank you. And, you know, you've always been very, uh, very supportive of our efforts. I think, uh, two things, uh, that come out, you know, the, the Michigan Tech has an advantage, right? That, that's a, that's a research tech-oriented university. Uh, here at Northern Michigan, you know, we've been historically a teacher's college, right? And, and Fritz, uh, is, is trying to change that, so we're gonna, you know, we're gonna support that. That's, that's one of those areas that I'm gonna focus on over the next six to 12 months, is what's going on, uh, in the bowels of that organization that we can extract and create, you know, commercialization on technology or research that's going on. So, that's one of our challenges. And, you know, and the other one is that, um, that, that, that when we go and, and have these events, that, um, you know, it, it's, it's really an, an age group that is much younger than I expected, that is coming out. And so, that's a good thing as well. And so, we're seeing an age demographic that we like to see, and we're, and we're, and we're seeing an interest and, and ability and a want to learn more. So, we're gonna spend more time doing that. You're gonna see a lot more of that from us here over the next several months.
Commissioner Kent Benzie?
Well, I'd like to thank you and your board members as well. Um, I think it's great progress, certainly from the last time you were here.
Yeah.
Are there ways to bridge industry and technology? I'm thinking of large battery storage.
Yeah.
And our iron ore deposits. And, uh, where it's going, and, and it's changing so fast. And with our energy crisis, I'm like, okay, maybe they'll come together.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right on it. I mean, I spent, I spent, you know, 10 years in the energy storage business, so I know about batteries and battery technology. Um, you know, the clean tech, the clean energy space is a long haul deal. You just, I mean, that's 15, 20 years of stuff, and it's big money. And so, you know, it's gotta be part of, you know, certainly part of our strategy, but it's gonna be the long tail on that one. It's just the way it is. Um, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that there's, uh, you know, research going on, uh, you know, in our community here that, um, you know, can address some of those, uh, issues, uh, certainly in, you know, water resources and, and energy storage and, uh, but we'll have to see. It, it's not evident, it's not obvious to me right now, uh, so we'll have to wait and see. But a big problem, a big problem, no question. Uh, maybe it's around biomass, you know, who knows, right? You gotta let the creative juices, you know, flow and see what's there, so.
Ray, we'd like to thank you for coming here tonight. We appreciate all that you do. Um, Smart Zone is really, it's an exciting concept. And as we move forward, uh, the fact that you're, uh, creating jobs, keeping young people in the area, it's all very good. So, stay with it. Good, I hope it continues, for sure it will. I mean, already you've done a lot. So, thank you. Hope to see you again soon.
Yeah, well, thank you, and thank you all for your support and, you know, thanks our, to our community and our taxpayers for the support. That's what's really making it happen. And please come out, you know, please come out and join us. You're all invited. We turn nobody down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our second presentation tonight will be by Jason Snyder, who is the Executive Director of the Marquette Chamber of Commerce. He's gonna speak about the Marquette Community Event Calendar. Jason?
Just pulling up my slides real quick. First, um, I recognize that it's nine o'clock, and you guys haven't even gotten to your first public comment yet. Um, I believe you've been here since five, so I really appreciate the work that you guys are putting in. I truly do understand, and I'm glad that it's you and not me. So, um, thanks for having me come in and represent the Marquette Chamber of Commerce on the Marquette Community Master Calendar Proposal. This has been a discussion in Marquette and has actually been tried a few times over, uh, the last two decades. In the most recent, uh, community, or the most recent Arts and Culture Master Plan for the city of Marquette, a community calendar came in as the top and, um, most desired thing from the arts and culture community. Um, and when we were talking to businesses, we found it was also one of the biggest things that we kept hearing about. We want a calendar to help with our own scheduling. And as Ray was discussing, it takes a lot of work to build a business ecosystem. That's kind of why we exist, is to build an ecosystem that everybody within the community can operate in and start breaking down some of the borders between municipalities and organizations. So, the need for a community master calendar. The number-one priority in the City Arts and Culture Master Plan has been the master calendar. Ninety percent of the respondents in your surveys identified this as a major priority. Um, it was mentioned 28 times in your Arts and Culture Master Plan. And the plan also recommends that you work with a public-private partnership, and it specifically mentions something like the Chamber, the DDA, the CVB, or another organization to be able to make this happen, so that it's not just on the city's back, so it doesn't have to do it by itself. So, a year ago, as we're getting the Chamber off the ground, I started speaking, uh, with Tina Harris in the Arts and Culture Department. And we realized that if the city was to take it on solely the city and solely arts and culture, it would just be a calendar for arts and culture, and it would be limited to just the city's jurisdiction, because it's all city funding going into it. And from our members' perspective, they wanted to bring in the different business activities that are happening, the different tourism events and festivities, the DDA events, but they also wanted to reach out to Little League, to Rotary, to faith-based organizations, um, basically reach out so that on one calendar, you can see everything that is happening within a community. Um, and we thought that it was important to all be in one place. So, in those conversations, we realized if we can partner somehow between the city and the Chamber of Commerce, as well as other organizations throughout the area, we can make something like this happen. And Tina approached with Artsopolis. Artsopolis is a software solution for a community master calendar that has faced a number of these challenges. Many of the community calendars that we have operating here and around the country run into the same kind of issue. It's, it's graphically difficult to access, it's hard to export, it's hard to import data. Um, Artsopolis is a nonprofit company based out of Silicon Valley, and it's from their arts community that said, "We can't find anything nationwide that's made to represent the arts community and really be divided in the way that we need it to as a calendar." So, they currently operate with, um, over 40 cities around the country, including, um, places like Kalamazoo, the St. Croix Valley, um, Boston, and, um, who else am I thinking of? Nashville is one of my favorites. They were created specifically for the arts community. One of the key things about them is they are a single point of entry, so it's one database that, that runs everything. And by everything, I mean, it gives you the ability to syndicate to partners' websites, and this is something else that they do, that is truly unique to them, is with this one central database where you log in, you put in your information, it allows the DDA, it allows the city, it allows the faith-based community, all to be able to run their own calendars with pre-selected filters. And that means that the, the full database would get funneled into the DDA's website as their own calendar. It could be funneled into the city's website as its own calendar, and you don't see all of the other events that are taking place. So, we could run a filter just for municipal meetings. We could run a filter just for arts and culture. And then, for Chocley Township, we can run a filter just for Chocley Township and the events that are happening there. And we can syndicate it out infinitely, um, based on location, based on tags that are built within the system. So, I put in a few slides here of, um, of what some of the pages can look like. And you can see across the top, the, not the full top, um, just under the now playing Nashville, you can see how they have it broken out by music, stage, arts, culture, family fund, sports rec, community, food drink. You can kinda start seeing that, and then you go to each one and it subdivides. And you have, you can look for it by date, and there's a, um, there's a login and setup, uh, event submission, all in one spot. So, this is just an example of some of the listing features that we can divide it by, and some of the search features that people can put in. I'll leave that there since there's a, a little bit more, um, more data on it. So, in talking to Artsopolis, Tina and I have had a few conversations with them. It's been about a year in progress. And the software itself comes in a base package, a module, that is about $16,000. And that allows us to purchase the software, um, and have them build it out for us and host it for us. And they have in, they have a number of modules we can add on into the future. Right now, the only module that we have is the syndication. Eventually, we can do event bookings and start listing, um, local businesses, local artists, and subdivide it out that way. Right now, we're just looking at doing the calendar and the syndication. So, in your agenda packets, you'll see there's a six-page, uh, agreement that we have offered to the city and to Northern Michigan University currently. And you can see our budget in there. Our first year is budgeted at around $35,000 to be able to operate this, and $20,000 every year after that. And we've set up, um, three sponsorship levels to be able to support that title sponsor, a gold sponsor, and a silver sponsor. You can see some of the sponsor examples right here. We left the sponsorship levels of what we were compared to the budget, because we're not coming to the city asking for you to fund the calendar. We're coming to the city asking you to fund a portion of the calendar, because this is a much larger community endeavor, and we're hoping to have support from multiple agencies. I've been able to speak with Peter White Public Library, the DDA, uh, the Visitors Bureau, and they've all expressed interest in, if we can find a good solution that pulls all the partners together, they've expressed interest in potentially moving forward. And so, we reached out to Northern Michigan University and the city as, as early adopters of this, asking for initial sponsorships. The sponsorships that we're asking for extend until, they're a three-year sponsorship, but the agreement or the commitment to sponsor goes until October. So, that gives us a few months to be able to fundraise with other donors. And if we cannot, for some reason, raise the funding that we needed for it, you're not committed to, to the full amount of the sponsorship. Going back to the budget, $35,000 is what we're looking at for the first year. Half of that goes towards purchasing the software, the other half goes towards, uh, staffing and marketing. Um, the Visitors Bureau has worked out something great with Delta Airlines and their Sky Magazine, and this would allow us to be able to help fund some of the advertising in there and make sure that people can see what's happening in Marquette. Um, we recognize one of the, the key things of this is having somebody on staff about 20 hours a week to really manage this and make sure that they go out to all the local organizations, um, to make sure that everybody's putting in their information correctly, make sure that people know that it exists and that it all gets used, um, used appropriately. And that is it in brief, um, the calendar proposal that you have in front of you. I've had the chance to meet with Carl and Tina and, and the city manager about this and, and discuss it in depth. The, the Community Development Department, uh, it is development or services? Development. Services, sorry, name change. Has found the funding for it within their budget over the next three years to be able to help support it. And so, we're asking the city commission to consider supporting this as a gold-level sponsor, which is the, if, uh, it's not gonna go back, um, which is $6,000 for the first year, $4,000 for the next two years. And that gives you branding on every page, um, syndication to more than, than one location, so if you wanted multiple calendars within your website managed by the central database, free sponsorship placement of up to four events a year. That sponsorship placement is this example that you see here with the, with the title, um, you want, event of Broadway's If Then, and you scroll down and you see the rest of the event, so you'd be in rotation there for some of the city events. And it also, uh, covers the data migration from more than one calendar right now. So, right now, the city operates multiple calendars for different things, whether it's for municipal meetings or arts and culture. And this would help us make sure that all of that data gets migrated. So, that's the proposal from the Marquette Chamber of Commerce. We hope that you consider it and, um, and vote in favor of it.
Two questions. First, one of your, Your Honor, this is an, uh, an agenda item for us, number 10, under New Business. And I have questions for just information. Should we deal with those now, or should I wait until we get to item 10 on the agenda? Probably wait.
I'd say wait.
Okay. But first of all, thank you, uh, this has always been something that people have struggled to have a system to work, but I'll have, follow up with some questions later. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's it, unless, um, either the city staff that I've talked with wanna add something that I may have missed, as they both shake their heads. Thank you for your time, and let me know if you have any questions during the agenda item.
Jason, thank you. Okay, now we come to our first public comment of the evening. This is, uh, when residents can address the city commission. You have three minutes. Please give us your name, address, city, or township. We're gonna open the public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission?
My name is Daniel Rutz. I live at 721 West College Avenue in the city, um, and I would like to reserve my comment for, uh, agenda item number 10.
Thank you. And I'd like to say that if you wish to reserve time to speak at a future item, now is the time also.
Hello, my name is, uh, Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Road. Um, I've not seen the agenda for tonight.
Hey, Matt, what's the city?
Marquette, here in Marquette. Um, I've not seen the agenda, so I don't know, but I would like to speak on this. So, number 10 is the only number I know of. Um, I don't know of any other items that are coming up. I'm sorry, there, all the agendas were gone when I came in. So, on that note, I would, uh, I'd like to go back to our meeting on, uh, this previous meeting that you guys discussed the bright yellow wall. I'm baffled, because, no offense, but Mr. City Attorney, you, you tend to fade out from your speaking into the microphone, and we, we, we don't hear it. So, there's a whole three-minute, there's a whole three or four minutes of your explanation for why we needed to do what we did or how we do our thing, that I didn't hear. I, I can't hear. Um, and it happened again tonight a few times. I just wanna remind people, please, please, the microphones, that one works a lot better for anybody taller, but Mr. Polzin was, uh, not on, uh, the speaker as well. So, I don't know what he, his rationale was. I don't, I don't hear any of that on the record. So, that's what brings me up here tonight, is to, to try to remind everybody that, when we speak of these things, it's because we tend to say, "At 9:30 on a Monday night, I have something better to do, but I am going to come up here and speak to you about this," or whatever it is. Those are the priorities that we set up for ours, for us. I would love to be a part of all these commissions and these, uh, different groups that we have vacancies for. Frankly, I'm holding two jobs, and I might have to get a third just to keep the food on the table and rents on the bridge. And the fact that we are talking about innovation for different projects, but yet we don't talk about the innovation that could happen for those projects. Case in point... Case in point, we spent $75 million on a new natural gas power plant. Sure, it's a lot of hot air, but that only costs the coverage of the building and the material. We haven't even discussed how to get the actual turbines down from the lake to the, to the place that they're building it. These are all things that we want planning commissions to be a part of. Why isn't the planning commission telling us where we should put our municipal energy plant? Why isn't Ray Johnson coming up and saying, "Hey, we could turn the whole OrdoC that is not being used right now into a solar panel and windmill heaven, and you could power your whole lakeshore"? These are things that, that when we come up to try to present to you the ideas, as I did in October of last year, when you came down to the last minute of what you decide I'm spending $75 million on, $30 million of it went to another foreign country. So I just want to say thank you, but I look forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fred Stonehouse, 875 Orianna Drive, Marquette. Could I reserve time for number 11, please?
Anyone else wish to address the commission?
Frank Jeffert, 350 Eastridge, Marquette, to speak on item 11. And I can't see your face, Dave. These are my opinions. Last Tuesday, the fire chief met me at McCarty's Cove to discuss waterfront safety, aesthetics, and land use. He displayed great understanding of the concept. You see, he brings his family down there on weekends. Hardly any commissioners are seen there on busy days, yet you're the ones making the decisions. We agreed that the yellow-shirted patrol should keep off the beach unless summoned and stay off the fragile dunes as well. Last year, they'd hang out at the guard stands for up to an hour, distracting the guards. We agreed on the level of enforcement and to allow alcohol if used responsibly, but no glass bottles. One guard wasn't aware that glass isn't allowed. Neither of us care for the buoys, aside from that they keep the boats offshore. They're a necessary evil as the public use increases. The manager asked me to run my land use concerns by the chief, such as renovating the lilac hedge near the new restrooms. More than necessary was removed, leaving oversized clearings on each side. We should reestablish the lilacs to about six feet from the building to ensconce the park more. The facility itself is great. We also discussed how the waterfront safety funds aren't spent proportionately to where the danger is, at Pitnik Rocks. One warning sign, 500 feet south of Pitnik Rock Point, ruins a gorgeous lake approach beneath the Cathedral of Trees, nowhere near the danger zone. The chief said he'd check in the moving farther north or nearer the parking area. The parks people were wise to keep the wind fences up to protect the dune at the main beach. However, there's no deterrent on the east end to keep beach users from ascending the dune, only to have to walk around the fence. By then, the dunes trampled. The chief said he'd have someone check into this and the feasibility of using brush to block access to unneeded trails so the dunes can recover. We would need to clean the debris thoroughly to prevent spread of invasive plants, which there are plenty of already. The chief understood the reason behind proposing to move the middle lifeguard stand to a nearby trail and restoring the dune. He heard the contractor who moved them say the north two stands aren't permanently anchored, thus aren't hard to move. An ongoing challenge is the general operation of equipment near the beach. Ruts are still visible between the two north stands. Because walking at the water's edge is difficult at times, people walk on the ruts, preventing them from healing. The chief had the great idea of adding life rings to the stands and proposing to move the center flagpole to the parking area. This shows his awareness to keep the visual distractions at a minimum and to consolidate the amenities whenever possible. So long as six of you destroyed a stunning section of dune grass to the north at Clark Park, please show enough regard for nature to repair the damaged dunes at McCarty's
Thank you.
Good evening. You're in Malakine and 8 Marquette Drive here in the city of Marquette. What an incredible place and town to live. Every time I, my wife and I drive around the city of Marquette, we see licensed plays from every state in Michigan, different countries, people come here. They enjoy what you, as city official, do in our community and make a place to really be an enjoyable place to live. I also want to thank the city for reappointing Dottie to the housing commission. She is our current chair on there, and she's doing a really fine job. In our next meeting, I assume we will reappoint her as a chair again. I also want to thank Mr. Conley for being a man of his word and doing what he said he would do and promote business in our community. We have so many, so many neat things to do in our community because of people that spend a million dollars, or spend $500,000, or spend $100. It makes a huge difference when many people do a lot or do a little. The previous speaker mentioned about the Board of Light and Power. I think that individual should really come to the Board of Light and Power meetings because the city's responsibility only is to accept or deny rate structure, period. The Board of Light and Power is a separate entity by itself, and by the way, I am running for that board as well. So I do participate in our community. The speakers that complain about, they should participate. I participate in the Landfill Authority. I participate in the Housing Commission. I also participate with the Sister Cities, and I participate with these meetings to my little degree as well. So I try to make things positive in our community rather than knocking it down because there are so many positive things that we have in our community and such incredible people that we have in our community. Thank you for everything you do, commissioners. And by the way, I want to thank Sarah for making a comment up, a nice comment last time. I missed it because I went home after the closed session, but I thank you for the nice comments. Have a nice evening. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission?
Hello, my name is Nicole Young. I'm the executive director for the Marquette County Convention and Visitors Bureau. The address there is 117 West Washington Street in Marquette. I just wanted to thank the city commission for all the work it does. Really good work tonight. I have such a great product to promote, and it's because of all the work that you guys have put into it. You're so careful and deliberate with your decisions, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate taking some of those chances to move forward on projects that are really meaningful to the community and to tourism, which is a big part of the economy here in Marquette. As the gentleman was saying, tourism season is on us. One of the things we're doing at the Convention and Visitors Bureau this year is we are sending out radio messages, asking people to please be very careful while they're in our community, and we hope the residents also take that into mind. We want to make sure that they leave no trace when they come to our community and visit and enjoy what we have to offer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody else wish to address the commission? See you none. We're going to close public comment. We're now going to move to the consent agenda. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion. Will you approve the consent agenda as written?
Second? Do we have a second? Pro Tem Reynolds?
Second.
Okay, the consent agenda contains some resolutions, so this requires a roll call vote. If, city clerk, would you take a roll call vote?
Thank you, your honor. Commissioner Baldini?
Yes.
Commissioner Cambenzi?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Sorry. Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Plord?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds?
Yes.
Mayor Campana?
Now we move to unfinished business. We have one item. That would be the Clark-Lambrose Beach Park mineral rights. City clerk, would you please give us the background in that?
Yes, and, your honor, I'd like to make a note. When I read this, there is a, there's a fraction in there. It says 1/16th. It should read 1/6th, just for the commission's information. Background, the Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Acquisition Grant received by the city for the Clark-Lambrose Beach Park Land Acquisition Project requires the city to convey to the state of Michigan a royalty equal to 1/6th of the gross proceeds of all, of sale of all oil and/or gas and other minerals produced on this property. In order to meet this requirement, prior landowners, Michelle Butler and the Island Beach and Tennis Club LLC, have conveyed to the city any mineral rights they may have had in the subject property. Fiscal effect, none with this action. Recommendation, approve and accept the attached quitclaim deeds from Michelle Butler and the Island Beach and Tennis Club LLC, and approve the attached quitclaim deed from the city to the state of Michigan and authorize the mayor to sign the deed. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion for this? Commissioner Conley?
I move that we approve and accept the attached quitclaim deeds from Michelle Butler and the Island Beach and Tennis Club LLC, and approve the attached quitclaim deed from the city to the state of Michigan and authorize the mayor to sign the deed.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Commissioner Conley?
This is a formality. There isn't going to be any mining there, and giving away a sixth of zero is still zero.
Commissioner Frazier, anything? Anybody else? Okay. We'll vote. All those in favor? I've been doing good today, though. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. That carries 7-0. Next, we move to new business. We have two items under new business. The first is the Marquette Community Master Calendar. City clerk, if you could give us the background, please.
Thank you, your honor. Background, the Marquette Chamber of Commerce has provided the city commission with a proposal for a community master calendar. The proposal would support a number of events which occur daily in the Marquette area. Through the City of Marquette Arts and Culture Master Planning Process, a comprehensive calendar was cited as one of the highest priorities. Currently, there are numerous calendars supported by either nonprofits, educational institutions, or quasi-governmental institutions. Due to the diverse nature of the community and number of events, many are lost due to community confusion. The proposal would consolidate all the data into one location with a robust solution to market and promote events community-wide. Working together with the Community Services Arts and Culture Division, the chamber developed a plan utilizing Artsopolis software. Artsopolis, a division of Silicon Valley Creates, is a nonprofit IT company providing calendar support for over 40 communities nationwide. Earlier tonight, the chamber demonstrated the software's robust capabilities. The chamber is proposing to contract with Artsopolis and will build, migrate data, and provide support services. Once configured, the chamber will provide hosting, management, promotion, and advertising. The cost of the software is $34,700 for year one and $20,900 per year for years two and three. To offset annual costs, the chamber has created three sponsorship levels. The chamber is requesting the commission consider a gold-level sponsorship commitment, which would be $6,000 for year one and $4,000 per year for years two and three. If approved, staff recommends the dollars be taken from the tourist park, 75 percent, senior center, 15 percent, and arts and culture funds, at 10 percent. Fiscal effect, tourist park fund would contribute $4,500. Senior service fund would contribute $900, and general fund would contribute $600. And my copy of this agenda item is cut off. Recommendation, approve the proposal from the Marquette Chamber of Commerce for a gold-level sponsorship for one year to develop a Marquette Community Master Calendar and authorize the city manager to sign the Marquette Area Community Master Calendar sponsorship agreement and amend the current budget to reflect the cost breakdown per fund as recommended by staff. Staff recommends a review after 12 months to consider moving forward with year two and similarly for year three. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, I believe Mr. Roots would like to speak to this.
It's good. I'm Daniel Roots. I live at 721 West College Avenue, Marquette. The community calendar is kind of an interesting thing in town. It's almost a running joke to do an entire community calendar, except that everybody desperately wants it, it seems like. But it becomes a mythical beast, and no one really understands or can think of how we might possibly achieve it. Google calendars certainly don't even come close, and so many organizations have their own, it's hard to understand how to pull all this together. It's said that any sufficiently advanced technology is indistinguishable from magic. And when I first saw Artsopolis and the way it was able to pull together so many different calendars and then feed the relevant information to each organization so that each organization can have the calendar they want with all the items they want while ignoring all the rest of the information coming in, seemed downright magical. The wonderful thing about it is that happens so much on the back end. The strength of Artsopolis is its ability to gather this information, filter it so well. However, it still requires a lot of support to truly be successful for a community. I think the chamber is a brilliant partnership for this. The recommendation from the master plan for the Arts and Culture Master Plan was to find a private-public partnership. I, full disclosure, I'm the secretary of the Marquette Chamber of Commerce, but our end goals are all based around community. The equivalent of our mission has to do with supporting the business community as a way of supporting our community as a whole. And that's how something like this makes a lot of sense for the way our chamber works. It's a chamber of commerce that is there to support the entire community. Each business, each member has one vote. It's equal across the board. Our goal is to support everybody in our area. And so I, from both as a citizen of Marquette, looking that direction, and a member of the chamber, looking the other direction, this partnership seems really rather perfect, and I recommend that you support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Oh, did you? Oh, I thought you wanted number 11. Do you want to? Did you want to speak to this?
Have at it.
Sorry, sorry to be so forceful. I'm actually, I'm, my name is Matt Luttenberger, 1406 Garfield Road here in Marquette, Michigan. I've lived here for probably 10 years now, straight. We're talking about 25 on and off. I, I'm a software designer in part of my career, so I designed websites. I designed this very calendar-type program. It's a lot of databases and a lot of queries and SQL engines. It's fairly complicated. Don't get me wrong, that cost that Artsopolis is charging is valid. That's about right. And that was what I brought to the LCP about five years ago to try to create a new magazine for in-town. I thought it'd be a perfect little spot. I, I'm from a big city. There are plenty of arts and calendar, or arts and culture-directed magazines. We've even tried a few of them up here. They've kind of faltered. A lot of it might have been the limited scope that they tried to present. But I'd have to say this, from a publishing point of view, how does this help us? How do, how do we actually tell people who are in-town right now what's going on besides going on your smartphone or going on your, your listing? Part of me says a better calendar is something in your hand that you can actually walk down to the beach with and say, "Hey, I'm going to think about this. I'm going to write some notes on here. I'm going to do this consciously before this thing comes up so I can go and enjoy it." If it's a matter of going out and enjoying some favorite band, that's, that's where the promotion comes in. That's where we need to get the word out. And, and a lot of that was what I was trying to think of as a business. And so I, this was five years ago, so there might have been a change of staff, but for the most part, this $20,000 and this $6,000 that you're about to be awarding would have been the exact funds I needed to start a business here in Marquette. It would have hosted at least five employees for all the different projects, and it would have utilized pride printing and the other printing on, what you call it, Lakeshore, Lake Street. Nonetheless, these, the calendar idea is great, and yes, we need it, but I don't see a way for this project, this Artsopolis database, to help the average city- see a way for this project, this Artsopolis database, to help the average citizen or visitor come into town to get a better idea of what's going on tonight or the weekend that I'm here. I, I might be a pterodactyl and a, and a dinosaur when I say I would like something in handwriting and printing, but that's part of our, as a city, what should be our presentation to the community. This is what you can take home with you and you did this, this weekend. This Artsopolis is a database and it doesn't show me that that's a possibility. And coming from an industry, I wish we'd see more of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, do we have a motion?
I have some questions, so I'd like to move to suspend the rule. Just put this question aside.
Do we have a second? Pro-Tam Reynolds?
Second.
The vote, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes, seven-zero?
My question's probably for Jason. Jason, who is the city? I mean, we're, the, the motion proposes this, but does that, we have then access to the site, does the Arts Council have access to the site? Does Peter White have access to the site or will they have to pay separately?
Can I ask what you mean by access?
Well, I, I would, I suspect we, the city, can put information on the calendar.
So-
Or give it to you and you put it on the-
So you mean specifically access to put your events on it?
Right.
It is totally public to everyone. Any organization in the community for free can add their events to the site.
Okay, so then what are we buying?
What you're buying and what the other partners are buying, and this includes, hopefully, Peter White Public Library, DDA, CVB, Maps, NICE, City of, City Nagani, City of Ishmaine, we're reaching out to a number of partners. What you're buying is the service that will actually host all of these events. You know, the residents of Marquette, and the reason we're coming to you for a portion of the funding, the residents of Marquette have identified a community master calendar as one of the key services that's necessary in our community. And so we found this and said, if we can spread out the support amongst a number of organizations around the community, then we'll be able to make this happen. The, the calendar is a public good. It's kind of like streets, you know, you can't really charge somebody for going down the street directly, and if you did, they just find other ways of doing it. And that's currently what we have now. A number of master calendars, some people go to Facebook, some people go to the Mining Journal or the Marquette Monthly or TV-10. And so our, our goal is to find something that is free for people to be able to put their events on and free for people to be able to find events. But it does need to be supported somehow.
I don't understand.
If I may, on two things. One, all of these are available in print, so we can actually syndicate directly to the Mining Journal and to the Marquette Monthly so that there's print copies either daily or monthly available. We've talked to both of them about that opportunity. And there was a slight miscommunication somewhere in there. Our request to the city was actually for a three-year commitment. I know the, the recommendation was a one-year commitment. The packages that we're offering to all supporters is a three-year commitment. And that's specifically because after one year, it's really hard to prove success. You know, it's really easy after one year for the community just to start to wrap their head around it. And after talking to six different agencies that use the Artsopolis software around the country, they've all said, when you go out for sponsorships, go out for a three-year commitment because that's what you need to be able to make this work. I don't know how you feel to address that. We'd be happy with any support that the city commission would like to provide.
So I suppose my question is, you're asking the city, and I understand-
Yep.
Is Peter White going to be asked also?
Absolutely. Every organization that I listed, and then some will be approached. We're approaching most of our members as well as some of the larger organizations including Cliffs, Lundin-
The city of Marquette will probably end up being the major contributor to-
Northern has agreed to commit the fourteen thousand over three years, the same as we're asking the city. Northern committed three weeks ago to that. We also have a title-level sponsorship, one above that, and we'll be approaching Cliffs and Lundin and some of the banks in the community to see if they'll go for a title sponsorship. And then we also have a tier below.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Conley?
This sounds like one of your great ideas, Jason. I kind of like it. I think this is really good. Now, if I live in Lansing and I'm planning a trip to Marquette, how do I get, how do I get to this calendar?
So Tina and I have been talking about the name marquette365.com. It is a one-stop, here is everything subdivided based on how you'd want to look at it. And then you would also have access to probably about ten other versions, whether you're on the Marquette Monthly's website and you're looking at their site on their calendar, it looks like their calendar. And that is essentially the same calendar. So is the one that would be running through the DDA if this all works the right way. And then on the register your event button, which could be on the Marquette 365, it could be on the DDAs, it seamlessly goes into their website. So no matter which one you're looking at, you can always go to the root calendar, enter your data, or look at more events.
As a, as a user?
As anybody looking for events. So if you're in Lansing, if you're coming up from Austin to visit and you look up, you know, Marquette Community Events Calendar, if you go to the DDA's calendar, you would effectively be seeing this calendar.
But I can't, I mean, I can't edit it from there, I can't add-
There will actually be a button-
My family reunion or some kind of-
You can't edit it per se, but there is a button that says submit event, and that allows you to set up an account. So, for example, if Superior Arts Theater, the, the U Theater, wanted to submit an event, they would just create an account, put their contact information in, and then they can add events at any time. And then we can filter those and monitor them to make sure they're, they're legit events.
So a Google search, what's happening in Marquette, would get me here?
Yep. Search engine optimization should bump it up fairly high.
Are there ads on this site?
There can be. So right now, we are looking at doing some advertising and working with some of our media partners to cover it. And talking to the other organizations that use it, they say ads cover less than five percent of their revenue for the most part, just because they don't really get a whole lot of click-throughs.
Will this cover events in the entire county?
It will cover events in the entire county, and we are reaching out to the other municipalities. I have talked to Marquette Township, Chocley Township-
That was my next question, but how about events in Elger County? This is specifically Marquette?
Our, our intention is specifically Marquette.
Okay.
I think going beyond that starts getting onerous on the, on the Chamber of Commerce to run events that far out. We've talked to the Nagani-Ishmaine Chamber and have received their support in trying to get it through funding on the west end as well.
There's a little leap of faith here going for the full three years, but I think you got to do it.
Pro-Tam Reynolds?
Well, just to follow up with your last statement, I also agree. I think that that is a leap of faith, but I think in order to make this work, just like we were talking with the Smart Zone, now that you don't get results with an ear, but I do have, I don't think it's really for you, Jason, but I have one question for you. As Commissioner Conley was saying that you were going to have a website, 365, do you intend to have any kind of like app or anything to that?
They do not, so Artsopolis does not have an app function, unfortunately. They, they're aware of it, and since they are based out of Silicon Valley, it is something that you're currently working on, but do not have yet.
So let's say-
Responsive.
I, let's say that they do come up with one in two years from now, would that be something we'd pay additional for?
That is all based on how they design their app. It could be something that they offer with their product or not.
Okay.
We don't really have any, any knowledge of that yet.
All right. And then my next question, I suppose, would be either to, probably to you, Mike. Our recommendation is to do one year and then two years following, and obviously we have the fiscal effect and the budget. Would we have, do we have room in our budget for the following two years to make this happen?
Yes, we do. Yes.
Okay.
Another question. The, the cost of the software is thirty-four thousand, twenty thousand, twenty thousand, and then sub, each twenty thousand each subsequent year?
I should correct that. In the, in the reading, it said he quoted the total budget for the entire project, not the cost of the software. The cost of the software the first year was quoted to us at sixteen thousand, five hundred. The rest of that goes specifically into marketing and staffing.
I, yeah, okay, yeah, it's, it's a leap of faith and, and probably we have to say a leap of faith as well.
Pro-Tam Reynolds?
I have one more question. This might be obvious, but after those three years, do we have an additional yearly contribution?
We will be asking all of our supporters and sponsors to consider re-upping after an evaluation of how the service goes.
But the software is already funded, so that wouldn't have to be refunded, correct?
Correct.
Just be the, that amount?
Right. After that, it would just be the staff time and the marketing expense. And when talking to the other communities, we've heard quotes everywhere from, oh, it only takes our staff five hours a week, to, oh, we've got somebody on thirty-five hours a week of all different town sizes. So it's hard to know. I'm leaning more towards, we've budgeted for fifteen hours a week right now to see how it goes. I also want to make note, the last time that I spoke in front of you, we had asked for support as chamber members from the city. And the reason we had asked for five thousand instead of going any higher than that is we wanted to treat the city like every other member, not ask anything that we don't ask from anybody else. And we thought that it was really important to go for fee-for-service type of support and sponsorship rather than asking for a fifty thousand dollar a year lump sum. And this was one of the first things that we identified, really that the city and the, and our chamber members had in common, and we wanted to be able to work together. So this was our attempt to work on, on specific services that we feel that we can provide for the city.
Commissioner Cam Benzey?
Well, I would say this is probably one of the most important, if not the most important thing to come out of the, the arts strategic planning that we just did. I mean, this is something that I've heard for about ten years, if not longer. I'm glad to see it come to fruition. If it does cost, I guess I should say, if it takes more time than the fifteen hours a week, does the city have any staff time through arts and culture that we could? No. And then I guess my question is, why, why isn't the city helping administer it versus the chamber?
You know, I think it came down to staff, I think it really did come down to staff time. The chamber is, is flexible to work with any of our partners, and so we can work with the Nagani-Ishmaine Chamber, we can work with the Visitors Bureau, the DDA, we can work with the city and any other partners on it, rather than, I guess, supplementing it with city staff time. You know, that could be something that would come up, but we felt the fifteen hours was a reasonable time based on talking to all of the other communities that have worked on it.
The no staff time is one of the most appealing parts of it to me. I mean, we kind of struggle as it is with our own website and it's, it consumes a lot more time than you might think at times.
I mean, I would be happy to accept staff time, should the city want to volunteer it, but it's specifically not on the table to be-
No.
Yeah.
Unless they, I get orders to that effect.
I'd like to ask the city manager a question. I've known, I've known, we've heard this a couple of times just tonight, but the staff has looked, the city staff has looked at this, determined that we should do this, and they're the ones who made the determination as how we're going to spend the money?
Yes, it came through the arts and culture and the community services through Carl. And they brought it to me a few weeks ago and explained the whole thing, and it, it made a lot of sense to me. They also came with a funding plan that is attached, not to the general fund, but to some specific funds in the city, which made it a little bit easier to sell, so.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Baldini?
Ready for motion.
Would anybody care to make a motion?
Me?
Yes, would someone like to make a motion?
I would move that we approve contributing to the Marquette Chamber of Commerce at the gold level of six thousand dollars for year one and four thousand dollars for year two and three, with the proviso that this be reevaluated October one, if there aren't any other contributors, is that clear? Okay. Okay? Is that clear for the file?
And do we, do we have a second? Pro-Tam Reynolds?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just briefly, I think it's a leap of faith, but many of us who have lived here for years have all seen these community calendars come and go, and there is a need, if we're really going to be a community, and I'm assuming the Visitors Bureau is going to be involved, it's something that's really needed and needs someplace where you can sort out also and see what else is going on in the community. There are so many things here and duplication, not duplication, but people doing something on the same day can probably, they could be more effective if they learn. So I, I think it behooves us, because our Arts and Culture people who are making a great investment of time, to go along with this recommendation and we'll see. Well, yes, obviously.
Pro-Tam Reynolds?
Well, I don't, I don't have anything necessarily further to add, but obviously this is part of our arts and culture plan, and I remember when we passed that plan, we heard the horror stories of all the times that community calendars were attempted and how they never worked, but this sounds like the most solid plan and it seems like you're going into it with the right idea, getting the right supporters, and the ability for anybody to be able to go in and add something to it is super important and it, I hope that that keeps it viable and livable, but that is all.
Commissioner Frazier?
Maybe Jason, if you talk to Mike, he'll give you some staff time in exchange for a discount.
Anybody else? Okay, see none? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes, seven-zero. Okay, we come to our, the second and last new business item, which is the United States Coast Guard Quitclaim Deed. City Clerk, background, please.
Thank you, your honor. Background, in 2011, the United States Coast Guard began the process of transferring the United States Coast Guard old station, Marquette property, and all onsite buildings out of the federal inventory. The station is situated on a 5.57 acre peninsula which extends from the western shore of Lake Superior, Marquette County, Michigan. The U.S. Coast Guard contracted with Arcadis U.S. Inc. to coordinate the environmental studies and remediation associated with the property transfer, and Arcadis in turn contracted Commonwealth Cultural Resources Group, Inc. to conduct, conduct the archaeological survey within the old station, Marquette project area. The remediation process and studies have been completed, and the United States Coast Guard has prepared a quitclaim deed to finalize the transfer of the property to the city. The quitclaim deed is attached for reference. Fiscal effect, no immediate fiscal effect. However, the property will now be included in our park system and may experience expenditures and/or revenues that are consistent with maintaining a city park. Recommendation, approve the quitclaim deed and accept ownership of the property and authorize the mayor to sign the deed. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Okay, we had two individuals who would like to speak to this. The first would be Frank Jeff.
Frank Jeff Arrow, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. The clock even started. April twenty-eighth, two thousand eight, for a third time, Mr. Tourville showed us a small eight-by-eleven map of the larger lighthouse property that the city would gain by sacrificing a wooded acre of our lakeshore. We're talking over eight years ago, Dave. Some people who might have enjoyed the park over that many years have died during the wait. About three years ago, I concluded that Mr. Tourville's map was a farce because too much time had passed with no known pressure put on the BLM to expedite its end of the exchange for land that was ours to begin with. This is how government officials showed us their appreciation for giving them everything they wanted. The commission ought to have built a time limit into the conveyance agreement ahead of the vote instead of leaving it open-ended. Even five years would have been too long. Subsequent commissions showed little concern about the government's procrastination throughout this year's too-long delay, despite all the environmental testing that had to be done and such. Thankfully, we're now receiving the land better late than never, although we're gaining nothing because the land was there and ours all along, which was expressed multiple times to this board prior to the vote. When the Coast Guard vacated the property, all the no trespassing signs remain posted to this day, even in the southwest corner, far away from many buildings. You're asked to remove all unnecessary signage at once and as much of the chain-linked fence as safely possible to give us access to our property as soon as it can be deemed safe. Please provide a public access, or I'm sorry, please provide a public process every step of the way involving Lighthouse Point and undertake every effort to maintain the natural integrity of the- of the perimeter from Arcardis Cove all the way around the point to the break wall. Provide safe, accessible parking on the west den near Coast Guard Drive with signs at the parking area that warn of dangerous rocks, cliffs, and currents. And soon, please, we're getting older by the minute.
Thank you. Fred?
Fred Stonehouse, eight-seven-five, Oriana Drive, Marquette. It's certainly as good that we're finally getting it. It's been a long, long struggle, swimming uphill against the federal bureaucracy quite literally every, every meter of the way. Two questions or two issues, though. When you read the, the claim, it has an awful lot of discussion in there on ADA. And ADA certainly is a very good thing, but you're dealing with at least two structures on that property that are, that are really under Section 106 and are, for example, the historic lighthouse, one hundred and fifty years old this year. And I question, without having the background certainly of our city attorney, of what those sections dealing with ADA really causes us to have to do to that property. If, for example, they cause us to have to make the lighthouse ADA accessible, then that is a massive undertaking, very expensive, and you might question destroying historical property for that purpose, or is that not applicable in that instance? Same thing with the eighteen ninety-one station house. So I would ask the attorney to explain how that might or might not impact on, on your deliberations. The other item is that on July thirtieth, between one and four P.M., the Market Maritime Museum is holding a lighthouse celebration. We are quite literally having a birthday party for our lighthouse, one hundred and fifty years old. It's being, we've partnered up with the Board of Light and Power. We'll be doing hot dogs and cake. Joe's Cakes is going to do the great big lighthouse cake, and we're going to have folk singers and lighthouse tours, and we're inviting all of the public to come. Everybody, we're hoping for at least five hundred people to have a celebration of our lighthouse. That said, considering that the motion tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign the deed, or the quitclaim, it would be a very nice gesture if the mayor agreed not to sign it until the thirtieth of July at that celebration in a public venue, so we can all take, take, take pride in it rather than do it quietly so early beforehand. Thank you very much for your, your able deliberation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
Approve the quitclaim deed and accept the ownership of the property and authorize the mayor to sign the deed at the lighthouse party.
Sir, a second. Commissioner Baldini? All those in favor, please say, discussion, sorry, it's getting late. Discussion, please.
I think it's great for the city and great for the Maritime Museum. The Maritime Museum has always been kind of running the lighthouse, so I think it's great for them to kind of take it over and have a little bit more say in the, in the property. It's too bad it took so long. I think Fred was on the commission when this took place, so it's been taking a while, but I'm glad it's finally going through, and I think it's great that the Maritime Museum is taking some ownership of the lighthouse and keeping it running good. I hope they're going to be able to take some, a little bit of property rights to the old, old station for tours or something like that.
Bishop Baldini?
I, I would like to ask the attorney about the ADA provision. I, I have to agree with former Commissioner Stonehouse, who was on the commission, I think, when they first started this process. If, if we have to make everything ADA compliant, I would suspect that the facility is not usable, or at least we're not going to have the money to make it usable.
Well, I can say a couple of things. First of all, one of the conditions for receiving this property is to allow the, the tours that are going on at the, the Coast Guard station with the lighthouse. So, I mean, all these federal regulations, the Clean Water Act, the ADA, all the environmental regulations are standard, they're not going to deviate from those. Those are required in all of these conveyances, so to speak. But, I mean, they've required us to have these, you know, that's one of the purposes, have these tours. And I think they're already ongoing, right? They've been happening over, over time, as far as I understand.
If I may answer. Yes, they have been ongoing, tours through the lighthouse, but the lighthouse is certainly not close to being ADA accessible.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying that that's, that, one of the requirements is to have these tours continue the way they are. And they would not, I've, I've had some discussions with them, some things they were able to give us, and some things they just won't take out of these conveyances. I mean, that's just government for you. So I, I don't think that's going to be an issue because they've allowed it in the past, and they want it to continue the way it has been. That said, I guess if you want me to go back and get clarification, I'd be glad to do that. I think it'd be a good idea to approve it, subject to that.
Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to thank attorney, city attorney Keith for maintaining focus on this and following through on this kind of long process that required a lot of patience. And thanks for sticking with it and bringing this.
Sorry. Thank you for sticking with it and bringing it home. A couple of questions. Were you, were you able to negotiate with the government ability to lease out any of the outbuildings?
Yes, that was one of the things that we wanted to be able to do, and the language wasn't very clear, looked like we couldn't. And so we, we were able to get that language taken out of the, out of the deed. I explained to the counsel on the other side that we really can't have those buildings sitting there with, and they would just go to ruin, and we'd simply have to maintain them without any purpose. And so that's been allowed. They took that language out. As long as we comply with environmental laws and the other rules and regulations here, we're, we're fine.
Okay. So they didn't specifically allow it, but it's not disallowed? Is that what you're saying?
Correct. They took two provisions out that suggested that you couldn't do it, and that's what we went around and around on. And they, they just, instead of modifying them, they just, they took them out.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that and paying attention to that. My next question is, the motion is to actually sign the deed six, approximately six weeks from now. Will, will that cause any problem with the government or the conveyance if we delay it the six weeks? I know they're the king of delays, but can, can we do that without jeopardizing the deal?
The, the discussions I had with the Coast Guard is, we really would like to get this deed before, on or before July thirtieth. And that was their effort to comply with that. There was no indication it had to be signed tonight, tomorrow, or prior to July thirtieth.
So if we do it on July thirtieth, we're good?
I think so, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Frazier?
Since you're so good at this, Ron, maybe there's some wording you can put in there that says, we will work on the ADA compliance eventually for, for our buildings, but make the deed signed, and then we will work on the ADA compliance later on, and maybe we can find some grants or something like that to help out the Maritime Museum with doing accessibility to the building. There might be some grants out there we can find to help with, cover the cost of doing the accessibility to the building, and it might help with the tours, too.
Well, the deed does call for walking tours of the lighthouse. I mean, this is the deed. Do you want the property or not? This is the deed. I mean, they've, they've cut as much out as they felt comfortable doing. And I'm willing to go back and say they have a, the commission has a problem with the ADA language and see what they say. We've still got time between now and the thirtieth of July, but you know how the government works.
Your honor?
Ten o'clock.
I would like the minutes to show that in conformity with past practice of the Coast Guard station, the Coast Guard, the U.S. Coast Guard, where tours were conducted without compliance of ADA, we're going to follow suit. At least it's in the minutes, and when somebody sues us, ten fifteen here somehow, you know, I think it's property we do need, and we've got to go with it. So I'd like to move the question.
Just last comment, since you indicated it's ten o'clock. After this motion, we'll need a motion to extend the meeting.
Yes.
That's what I thought you were asking. Commissioner Cam Benzey, you have a comment?
Well, I'd like to thank Ron for his work on this, too. It was a long haul. I thought there was some great information, though, that came out through the years. One was the native plant study, which I guess you wouldn't think, but without having people walking around out there, a lot of the plants there are different than what you'd find off of this property. So I thought that was fascinating. I know the Maritime Museum will do a great job with this. My recollection with running a historic auditorium is it's, it's the change of use. Like, if we were using this for a different purpose, I think they'd be a little harder on us, hopefully, with the ADA, ADA. But I think if we are using it as it's been used, I think we should be okay, hopefully.
Anyone else? Okay, let's vote on it. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes, seven zero. We are at the, we are at the ten o'clock hour, we
have to make a motion to, this is my first time at ten o'clock. Are we adjourning or just continuing? No, I mean, do we adjourn for five minutes, or do we just continue on?
No, I, I make a motion that we go past the ten o'clock cutoff time for a meeting.
Sir, a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Do we need a discussion?
And we have to adjourn at ten P.M. That's the set rule. So it's in our rules that we have to adjourn at ten P.M. So it's just to extend to finish the meeting.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion, which is to extend the meeting past ten o'clock, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Passes, we will continue. Okay, we come to our final, second public comment of the evening. If anyone wishes to address the commission, now would be a time. You've got three minutes. We would need name, address, city or township. Anybody, we're going to open, we're going to open public comment. Anybody wish to address the commission?
Good evening. You're in Marquette Drive. I'll make it very short. Thank you for taking the leap of faith with Jason. I joined the chamber a week ago, Friday, and he had my webpage and all the information on that site in less than twenty-four hours. That's incredibly fast for any organization, so you guys are safe with his hands. And so thank you for continuing, promoting the activities in our community.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Road, here in Marquette, Michigan. I don't know how to explain this. How do, how do I respond to a comment that I was mentioned in, to, out of the public comments? How do, how do I respond to him if I'm supposed to talk to you? So I'll say it this way. The Board of Light and Power, from what I read in the, the newspaper, was confronted by, or presented with the possibility of, of fixing, upgrading the bridge, that they have some dirt on the other side of the Dead River for the trucking companies to cut off Sugarloaf Ave and Wright Street and go right by our municipal center. According to the paper, we never heard about that. We, we as a city commission never actually, or the planning commission, was never presented with the idea of actually creating a roadway over there. And so the, the things that the BLP put in the paper was about how it's a budget thing, and the, the trucking company would have cost close to five hundred thousand dollars, whereas this was a two hundred thousand dollar improvement. These are my things about you as a city commission. I mean, tonight, you gave a bunch of money to a guy who's going to create a database for you. No offense, but that should just be something he does as part of the plan of being a city chamber of commerce. Sure, you got to pay for it and get a fee for it. So what he did is he came to you and said, here's five thousand dollar plan, and then every time we do something, we're going to charge you another ten grand, twenty grand. I'm sorry, but that's a, that's a bait and switch in my book. And I've, I've been in a couple of different discussions. I've lost three different patents, and that's why I'm not talking to the open invite of your smart zones. There, there's a lot of times when you need to be protective of your stuff, and we, as a city, are not being very protective of the responsibilities you need to do, one of them being roadways. My time is up. I don't know if we have only two minutes or three minutes, but I would like to say thank you for speaking, or allowing us to speak past ten o'clock. It is a long meeting. I would actually like to see a lot more of these go past ten o'clock. We got a lot.
Time's up, time's up.
Discussed.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Frank Jeff Verdo, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. April, I mean, May thirty-first, a man mentioned a low volume on the public microphone, which still was too low. Close-ups of the members are still generally not provided, whether it's the equipment or the operator. Please get a handle on this. Also, on May thirty-first, Ms. Campenzi voted against your latest service interaction because, quote, "The previous commission didn't allow the public to comment on the financial aspects." At the same meeting, Mr. Conley reported the lack of public process before a patio appeared in our public walkway. Then there's Clark Park, where five hundred feet of private beach entered the picture, allegedly behind the scenes. We await explanations. In his closing comment, Mr. Plourd said, "Regulating citizen comment is not a violation of the Constitution. There's nothing that says someone can say anything they want. Public comment is for the public and public business, not for personal vendettas or arguments. They should be talking about commission or public, public business," end quotes. I'm in total agreement. No one ever believed that people can say anything they want, and these opportunities are restricted to city matters, not personal vendettas. Most all the comments we've heard here fit that criteria. In accordance with Mr. Plourd's quotes, your every vote and statement is subject to analysis and due criticism. When Mr. Coyne threatens me in the men's room, you'll hear about it until there's a resolution. Mr. Campana, who missed our last meeting, read my emailed comments. In summary, if there's ever a legitimate reason to interrupt, you're asked to pause the clock. Keep in mind that we're paying an attorney to counsel you during these meetings. It isn't his job to speak up unless a violation is ready to occur. He wasn't able to interject his opinion because none of the three who complained about the public comments bothered to ask him. You were asked last time, if you recall, consulting the attorney last year, while I bashed Mr. Coyne many times harder than anything you've heard since. You should know by now, Dave, or at least have asked the attorney off record. You were also asked what changed two members' minds behind the scenes that led them to vote for a project with five hundred feet of private beach when they vowed only two weeks earlier not to. Mr. Plourd meant well, but is asked to review the Constitution, he quoted, with an open mind, and again realized that this board's history didn't begin the day he joined, as mentioned last week, when a new example surfaced by which he suggested letting the alleged permit violation go this time. We've entoured too many of these times already. Our manager, who's aware of the past, reminded us of why closing comment was banned, but he opted not to mention that this occurred only during the year in which Mr. Coyne most recently chaired. Have you not noticed that harsher criticism was doled during those three minutes than during any of my six minutes since? Yes, you can legally reduce the time, but if done for the wrong reasons, we're returned to that format. And back when I served in a disability organization, something like the lighthouse could be grandfathered in if making repairs would lead to an exorbitant expense.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the commission? Anybody else? See none, we're going to close public comment. We're now going to go to comments from the commission. I'd like to start with Commissioner Cam Benzey.
Okay. I'd just like to take a moment for the victims' families in Orlando, as well as those two community members who drowned in Lake Superior out at Little Presque. Two tragedies certainly that hit us yesterday. I think a lot of people have stopped to pause. I'd like to say congratulations to Stephen Matt. He was a heavy equipment operator who retired recently, and also for his service in the U.S. Navy. Smart Zone, I think we're really starting to move on it. That was a great presentation by Ray. I'm happy with the community calendar, and I look forward to seeing what that can do. And I hope that soon we'll have a resolution on the yellow wall and, and the property downtown. I really do think it's a great project, and I do hope that the, the neighbors can. go forward, so here's to a positive future.
Commissioner Frazier?
I do feel bad for the people that drowned at Little Presque Isle. It was a really nice day and I know that's everybody's big thing to do when it gets warm and sunny, everybody wants to head to the lake and swim, but I think people should use the beach or go somewhere more fun to swim. My other thing is, I was out boating that day, so I heard the message from the Coast Guard about what was going on and I saw the city police volunteered their dive team to go out and help, so the city was big help and I know the fire department has been volunteered to help out with some extra safety gear for the environment, which would be great. I encourage people, if you're going to go swimming somewhere like Lake Superior, check out the nearshore marine forecast. It won't tell you anything about currents, but it will tell you at least where the winds coming from and what the waves are going to do. It's something I use every day as a boater and that day I was out boating and the winds were pushing my boater on like crazy, so I can't imagine swimming in that wind would be crazy, but our planning commission got some construction experience by its new member. I think that's a good thing for helping with the planning commission with all the stuff they get going on. That's all I have, thank you.
Pro Tim Reynolds?
I have no further comments this evening.
Commissioner Baldini?
Just one quick comment. Three weeks from tonight, the fireworks will probably be shooting off, so everyone wants a plan, okay?
Weather guaranteed?
Weather guaranteed.
Bishop Plourd?
I do want to thank Mr. Verito for quoting me perfectly. That was well done, but I also want to thank all the public comments today because they were very pointed and I think that, I really believe that is what we need. I learned a lot from people and I'm glad that people came up and spoke and felt comfortable doing that and again, it was very pointed and I respect that and I thank you for that. 10 o'clock, it's a long meeting, but, and I don't want to see them go all that long all the time, but for the business that we had to do today, yeah, it was necessary and well done all around. I think it was a very good business meeting and that's what we do. We conduct the city's business and I don't mean we, the city commission, but I mean we, everybody that was here tonight. So, thank everybody for attending the meeting. Besides, it was a great, a great crowd tonight and all the people that spoke. Again, thank you very much.
Commissioner Conley?
I'd like to congratulate city manager Mike Angeli on becoming a granddad. Goes along with the white hair. Mom and baby are doing well, I trust in, congratulations. I'd like to thank city clerk Chris Hazras for coming up with a great idea of contracting with Lake State Industries. It provides meaningful work and it provides the city savings, so it was a great idea and I want to thank her for coming up with that and implementing it. Last week, I was proud to represent the city of Marquette at the UP meeting of the Michigan Municipal League in Ironwood and I was particularly proud as many people from other communities, city managers and commissioners, came up and just said how pleased they were, how happy they were with the city of Marquette, not for just what we provide, but they admire us for our economic development efforts, they admire us actually for a functional city commission. If I, that's, almost that's to quote them, not me.
Meeting is well, but only after 10 o'clock, so I think it's, I think it's directly related to the time we, amount of time we spend here, so, but I'll get it taken care of, thanks.
We are adjourned.